Anthony and Julie, I think I've unmuted both of you. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Hey, um, the time is 6:01 and I would like to call especially a special in commission meeting to order. I am just going to give the invocation, oh, the pledge of allegiance, if that sounds good to everyone. So, our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for this time to be able to gather virtually like this and we pray for a quick solution to this global pandemic and to be able to have a great discussion where we can make thorough decisions and be able to hear the guidance of those who have been researching and looking into this to best make the decisions that will have a long lasting, good and stable effect on our city. We love thee and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Okay. We are going to do a roll call. So Jake, you're going to need to unmute all of the city council members and all of the planning commission members that are seated. Just to give everybody an idea of how we're going to run the meeting tonight, I will be conducting the meeting and then I will be handing it over to Anthony, the commission chair. And as the different as the different items come up. And then if you have a question, because you are all muted, you will go, you will want to click down on the on the participants tab down at the bottom of the screen. And then you will see all of the names come up on the side and a chat come up. Right under all of the names is an unmute me and a raise your hand. You're not going to have the option of unmuting you. Our city manager will be running that, but you will have the option to raise your hand. And I will give you an example. If you see my hand is now raised on the chat. And then you can lower your hand with the same button. And as you do that, I will call on you to speak. Okay. If you don't understand how to do it, please reach out on the chat to Jake McCarg. You can go down to the bottom and you can see it too. And click instead of everyone, you can write Jacob McCarg and he will help you. And the chat is going to be turned into public comments. So anything that's said on there is going to be changed from right now to this point to public comments. And Jake will be reading those comments to me and to the public and we will have the first, we will be able to answer you through that forum. If you have any questions. So without further ado, we will go ahead and begin the meeting and I'm going to call the roll call for the city council. Start with Kristy Welsh.
Yes, here.
Tice Flake. Hey. So I don't know if Tice is on yet. Chris Judd.
Here.
And John Ernest.
I am here.
And then I am here. And now we'll go through planning commission and Anthony, I'm going to let you do that because I don't know, I don't have the list of who is seated tonight.
That's fine.
I think I had Tice muted, so you want to ask him again? I think he's on the phone, just on through his phone.
Okay, Tice, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, good to have you.
All right. So onto the planning commission, Anthony Jenkins, I'm here as the chair. Jeff?
I'm here.
Tim?
I'm here.
Bryce?
Here.
And Shan?
I'm here.
Thank you. That's everyone.
Excellent. Well, go ahead and move into open session. This is a time to address the council for things that are not on the agenda. We asked that everybody submitted their comments beforehand. If you are participating in the meeting and have something you would like to say. And Jake, would you mind muting everybody that's not talking right now except for Anthony?
If we want to say something, we have to go down here to participants. Put like your hand.
Okay, excellent. We will, this is a time, so try to catch where I was. The comments, we've asked that they come beforehand. I don't know if we have any at this point, but you may also write in the chat. And Jake can read them. So I'm going to turn that time over to Jake to see if there are any public comments.
Okay, I got, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, I've got two public comments, well, two people that submitted public comments. They had a couple of questions. So the first question is from Cody Smith. And it says, hello, in response to the Facebook post about the virtual meeting this evening, I wanted to submit the following questions. One, there is a good portion of about 10 feet between the wetlands and the sidewalk on Zinfandel Lane, where weeds are growing out of control to five plus feet. Can this be landscaped? And then two, last year, the city put rock, poured rocks on the city owned strip of land between the sidewalk and road of Zinfandel Lane. However, each year significant weed growth occurs and is not well maintained. Can this be revisited? And then three, with new homes well underway in the Sycamores neighborhood, when will the grounds slash landscaping happen along road between the Elms and Sycamores? Thank you. The rest of the city north of these neighborhoods appear to be well landscaped, but this area in general seems a little behind.
Okay, great. Thank you for your comment, Cody. We will look into that. I don't know if Public Works has a comment for you tonight. Jake, was that prepared?
Um, I, I talked to Dawn about that ahead of time. I don't know. He was having trouble connecting, so let's see if he's.
Okay. Well, if not, what we can do is let's get his information. He emailed you and let's get those answers put together. And what we'll do is have Dawn respond to it and then we will also add it into our next discussion on city council. We'll give the update for what happened.
Okay. All right. That's great. The, the only other public comment that I had so far was from Zach Bishop. He also had three questions and he says, hi, I have a few questions I've been wanting to ask. They aren't really related to anything super current, but still questions I've wanted to ask. One, is there an update on the golf driving range that was supposed to go in by the megaplex? It was talked up a lot and then seems like all progress and news disappeared. Two, what is Vineyard doing to make sure the planned town center will be successful? It seems like there has been difficult enough time filling the retail spaces by the megaplex and with so many businesses that have closed down in Provo and Orem, what is Vineyard planning to do different to ensure its success and an actual area businesses and people want to be? Three, how can we get public trash cans placed throughout the city? Just adding a few along trails and sidewalks would help cut down on litter and dog waste left around. Thanks so much, Zach Bishop.
Okay. So the excellent thing about tonight, Zach, is that you will be able to hear some of the ways that we are working on the town center and what is, how it's going to be different from other areas. As far as the trash cans, we will reach out to Public Works and discuss what the options are for that. And what was the first one, Jake?
An update on the golf driving range.
Okay. And we'll look into the update on the golf driving range unless Jake, you have a, an update on that right now. If not, we can get back to him.
Um, we've still been working with the, the landowners and developers on that project and so we'll get an update as soon as we have one.
Okay. Okay, great. Are there any other public comments? Has anything come through the chat?
I haven't seen anything come through the chat.
Okay, then I am going to close this open session and move on and turn the time over to Anthony Jenkins, our commission chair, for his consent items.
All right. Thanks Jake. Thanks Julie. All right. So the first item for the planning commission to address is the consent items. The first one is 3.1 approval of the February 24th joint planning commission meeting minutes. And 3.2 is the approval of the March 4th, 2020 planning commission meeting minutes. So I am asking the planning commission members to either make any discussion changes, comments, or I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent items.
This is Tim and I would make a motion to approve the two consent items.
Thanks. Do I have a second?
This is Jen.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, I'll second it.
Right.
Comment.
Shan has a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we doing everything? Roll call Pam? Yes, okay. Anthony, aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
And Shan?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Back to you Julie.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to approve, we have a consent item as well. I'll read them if you're not looking at them. It's 3.3 approval of the March 11, 2020 city council meeting minutes. And the approval of the Hampton's D final plat. What I'd like you to do is raise your hand if you want to give the first motion and then raise your hand for the second and I'll call on you. Anybody figure that out? Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, good.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented on the agenda.
And can I get a second?
I'll second. John Ernest, second.
Excellent. And roll call, Kristy?
Aye.
Tice?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And I, I agree as well. All right. I'll turn the time back over to Anthony for the first three business items.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we will jump into item 4.1, discussion in action. Little Caesar signed standard waiver, pretty, pretty standard approach here. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, I'll turn it over to you to introduce this and cover anything and then we may also have that applicant if we have questions for them as well. So I'll turn it to staff now.
Liz, you should be unmuted. Can you verify?
Can everyone hear me now? Okay, good. Okay, so I don't know if Morgan has the presentation or if we can put that up.
Let me see. This is what you're talking about, right?
I don't see anything.
We still see the welcome to the joint session page.
Okay, hold on one second. What about now?
Yep, that's it. Okay, so Little Caesars is requesting approval of a third wall sign. They currently have two approved wall signs that went through the sign process. That's the north and south elevation wall signs that you see here on that graphic. The request they're asking for is the awning sign, which our code considers awning signs as wall signs. So with the two wall signs, they're asking to add an additional nine square feet, which is the awning sign, which brings that total footage of sign area for the whole entire building to 67 square feet. Under that 120 square feet that we allow a regular sign code for signs to be. And the purpose of the awning that they provided was that it's to provide customers shelter from inclement weather and identification of the drive through area. And it will not be illuminated. Our sign code does not allow awnings to be illuminated. And it also only allows for the logo to be on that shed part of the awning. So I know in your staff report, it showed two options, but they're only allowed to show the Little Caesars logo on that shed. And like Anthony said, staff is recommending approval of this third wall sign. Do you guys have any questions for me? Or I don't know if the applicant Sue is on either.
All right. Thanks for that, Liz. Planning Commission, I believe Jake is unmuting all of you. If there are any questions for Liz or the rest of staff or the applicant, if they are on, please ask those now. Again, you can click, raise your hand if you need to and we can, we can make sure that you're heard. And we can have some discussion and then we'll follow that by some action. Any discussion from the planning commission?
I don't have anything to add.
Me either. I think it looks good.
Me too.
Okay. Hearing no questions. Do I have a motion for the Little Caesar sign standard waiver?
I can make a motion that we, I don't have the motion in front of me, but I can look at it really quick. That we approve the sign standard waiver for Little Caesars for the additional awning sign. Do I need to say anything else besides?
With the listed conditions by staff as well.
That's right. Okay, with the listed conditions from staff. That's right.
Okay, thanks. Thanks Bryce. We'll go roll call again. Anthony, aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
And Shan?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Little Caesar sign standard waiver passes. We'll move on to business item 4.2, the SWIG sign standard waiver. Very similar. Liz, I'll let you present this one as well.
Jake, can you go to the next slide? So this one's very similar to the Little Caesars. Again, they're requesting an additional wall sign. So they were, they went through the sign permit process and got two wall signs approved. And that's why they're requesting a third wall sign. So this wall sign faces Mill Road. Approximately 36 square feet in size, which meets the sign code of one square foot per one linear foot of building, as you can see on that graphic. And so that brings the total wall signage area for the building to 94 square feet, which is still under that 120 square feet that we allow for the total maximum. The total maximum sign area. And this sign just provides additional visibility to customers as they drive along Mill Road. And I do believe Ethan Moon is on the call and he is the applicant for the SWIG sign if he has anything to add. And staff is recommending approval of this sign standard waiver.
Ethan, I unmuted you. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think that she covered it basically, just wanting to get that, that extra visibility from that road.
When do you guys plan on being open?
So maybe George can answer this question, but I know they're going through the building process right now. I'm, I'm not sure where they're at, but maybe in the next couple of months they'll be open.
George, I just unmuted you.
So we are in the process of completing the shell. The TI has been approved. And so they're kind of working on that simultaneously. It is kind of hard right now to estimate any sort of timeline, but I would say within the next couple of months, we should see that open up.
Do you have any info on Little Caesars?
It, it looks like there's a comment Steve Hutchings just posted, within 60 days, SWIG should be open 45 days, COVID-19 pending.
Right. I mean, that's probably, I mean, that's right in line with what I was thinking as well. So yeah, I think that's pretty accurate. Little Caesars is basically in the same boat.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Yes.
Looked like I had a couple, it looks like Chris, Chris Judd's hand is up. So I don't know if Chris has a comment.
I more so just wanted to find out from Liz and how, you know, how that sign ordinance is going. We're starting to see buildings come up and this is the first time we're kind of starting to see those, those come in. How's the process going overall?
So far, we've actually had quite a few sign standard waivers for additional signage, like a third wall sign. We've seen a, I mean, we've seen a lot of buildings that are requesting that or just larger signs in general, which we've approved all of them. So it's been going smoothly, but we are also updating the sign code to possibly allow applicants to do more signage. It just depends on what the planning commission seems to define appropriate in terms of number of signages, I think, what we'll look at for this type of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chris, from my, from my standpoint and with the planning commission, so far it hasn't been burdensome to, to field these, you know, as we see the build out continue to happen, it may make sense to make this part of just the, the standard approval without requiring the waiver. But for right now, I think it's, it's working pretty, pretty well.
Great, thanks.
Yep. So planning commission now, you should be unmuted. Any questions or discussion internally? If not, I'll look for a motion for the SWIG sign standard waiver.
Oh, this is Tim, if you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. So kind of a follow up to what Chris asked. I'm just wondering if we are getting so many requests for exceptions to our sign standard. Is there something wrong with our sign standard, given today's businesses and the kinds of businesses that are going in?
Tim, if, I'll answer that. I think a lot of, when we get requests for a third additional sign, we're seeing that those buildings, like, like Starbucks is a standalone building that has visibility from three different sides. Same with Little Caesars at SWIG. They have that visibility from three different sides. And I think that's where we need to look at maybe allowing a higher number of signs because currently the sign code only allows two. And in terms of signs, like sign area, all the signs, unless they requested it, have come in and they've met that maximum sign area, unless they've requested a sign waiver for it specifically, which I think only a few of them have been for just more sign area.
Okay, that, that's a good answer because I was just wondering if we are getting quite a few requests for waivers, if we need to go back in and check our sign standard, but if it's because we are a standard and we didn't take into account three sides, then that's probably fine.
Yeah, and that's why we created the sign standard waiver is because the two signs, just allowing two signs is very restrictive and yeah, you're right, staff didn't take into account like the corner lots that would have the third visibility of it, but that's also why the stand sign, the sign standard waiver allows that, just to go through you guys. Um, but as we go through the process of updating it, I think we're going to change that to allow at least three, maybe more. Just depends on what you guys want.
Thank you, Liz.
Yeah, thanks Liz. Any other questions or discussion that needs to take place on the SWIG sign?
I can make a motion. I'm able to approve the sign standard waiver with listed conditions by staff for the SWIG.
All right, thanks Bryce. Any second?
And I second it, this is Tim.
All right, thanks Tim. We'll do a roll call. Anthony, aye. Jeff?
Oh, Jeff's muted. Hold on. Hard to keep track of all you guys where you're at. Okay.
Jeff?
Aye.
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah.
Bryce?
Aye.
And Shan?
Oh, Shan's muted too.
Shan?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. So item 4.2 passes and we'll move on to item 4.3, discussion in action on Yard C preliminary and final plat. We'll turn it over to staff for presentation. This one will be a little bit different. The planning commission will consider and take action and based on what planning commission does, the city council will then follow up immediately.
Okay, and Morgan is going to take, do the staff presentation on this one.
Great.
Great, thank you. Let me know if you guys can hear me.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. So this is for the, the former lot four of the Yard B. That's the property on the corner of Mill Road and 400 Worth, just worth of the Edge Homes Development. Or not the Edge Homes, I'm sorry. It was Edge Water Townhomes and just south of the megaplex. Near across the street from the Uvu athletic fields. So this property was recently approved for site plan for a medical office building. And the applicant now is requesting that, oh, and yeah, thank you Jake, if you could, you could pull this up. Yeah, perfect.
Tell me when the next slide.
No, yeah, you're, you're good. The applicant is requesting to subdivide this lot. This lot is 3.39 acres. And if you could go, go to the next, next slide, please. They're requesting to subdivide this into two parcels. So what they've indicated to staff is that the corner parcel will go retail, so that the hard corner will become a retail parcel and the interior portion will be a medical office building. So essentially the medical office building and the retail would come back in for a site plan approval in the future. But this subdivision would accommodate that. Another thing to point out with this plat is that it also affects parcel A2, which is adjacent to 400 North. That's the future expansion of 400 North to accommodate the widening of the road for light rail in the future. So that'll carry through as well. Staff is recommending approval and this will be a planning commission recommendation of the preliminary plat to the city council. The city council would approve and they can do that, the same motion, the preliminary plat and the final plat. That's everything from staff and I believe Steve Hutchings with X Development is on. And so Jake, if you could unmute him. And if he has any comments, then we can take some questions from the planning commission.
All right, Steve, I think I've got you unmuted.
Perfect. Thank you Jake. Just one clarification. We are planning on professional office and we have some potential medical tenants. But right now it's planning on professional office.
Thanks Steve. Any, any additional information you'd like to touch on or would you like us just to ask questions if we have them?
Just ask questions. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Planning Commission, I'll open it up now. If you've got questions for staff or for the applicant relating to Yard C, please ask those now.
So when you say retail for the corner lot, are you thinking like a restaurant or what exactly? Or professional office for all both lots?
No, the corner will not likely be a professional office. It's the retail, it's a corner, which has more value. And it's likely to be a restaurant. That was kind of before all this COVID-19 stuff. I, I don't know exactly what it's going to be. We've had a couple of offers from some users that we are not interested in because it's the corner. So we are, you know, I think pretty picky about what that corner looks like and what the frontage on Mill Road looks like. But I, I'm pretty sure that should be retail, single level.
Cool.
Hey, good question Bryce. Any other questions for staff or for the applicant?
We do have one question from, from the public. I don't know if you'd like me to, it looks like Julie's asking David to raise his hand in here, but I, I'm happy to, to address that. What he's asking is
Yeah, just read the question, please.
Where would the light rail go on this plat? So that's a long-term future plan that is currently on a MAG, Mountain Lands Association of Governments plan. I know that they're looking at the light rail route now, but currently we are shown as a, as a potential route for light rail. We'd love to keep it there. So they don't have, it's, I, I, and Dawn can jump in if he wants, but I, I don't believe there's like engineering has been done or anything. It's just a long range plan to put light rail down through the Uvu parcel and then having to turn and go east on 400 North.
Right now, the, the plan is that the light rail would go down the center of the road. So, and then Um, so, and then the lanes would be on both sides, parking would be on both sides. So that's the plan.
Alright, thanks and thanks David for the question. Uh, Jeff, I believe you had a question?
Yeah, and this might have been covered. I just wanted to make sure. Um, so the access for this corner lot would just be off of that private roadway or would there be access off of 400 North for the Lot Nine, the retail lot?
Uh, no, we're not, we don't uh anticipate any access off of 400 North as it's so close to the corner. And with the left turn lane there, um, we don't know the use. It's likely that there will be an access off of Mill. And uh then the internal access from Lot Four as well as the road that is called uh 450 North, I think.
It's at 400 North?
Or, uh, no, the north, the road just to the north of it. I think it's 450, yeah.
Okay.
Morgan, I have a question for you. Just uh, I, I think this, it's covered in the site plans, but uh, I know that uh accessibility as far as sidewalks and pedestrians. Will, are, will this be associated? Uh, you know, it says the build out happens with, with the sidewalks uh going in. I, I think we saw that already on some of the site plans, but can you confirm?
Yeah, as the development has, has occurred and Don probably has more information on this, they've been installing um the, the sidewalks internally. Um, if you mean on Mill Road, maybe it'd be better to have Don kind of uh, kind of, kind of address the Mill Road, 400 North sidewalks.
Yeah, please, Don, if you're unmuted.
Yes, um, we would really like to have Mill Road, the sidewalk on Mill Road done sooner than later because we have a lot of people south of Fourth North that would like to be able to get up to uh the Megaplex. So we're working with the developer right now to get those sidewalks in. I have not seen a design that actually shows that other than as this, as the site plans come in, they're putting sidewalks in, but I'd like to see it connected all the way up as soon as possible.
Got it, thanks. Shan, I, I believe you had a question?
I, I was just gonna ask, so are you talking about the, the retail space that's on the corner being mostly restaurant? Or is it like other retail space or it, it sounded like you were talking about restaurant. I kind of had a so, wanted some more clarification on Bryce's earlier question.
Uh, yeah, thanks for the question, Shan. Um, so uh, it's likely that it would be a restaurant. Uh, we've talked to uh multiple restaurants, sit-down restaurant users for the site. That was uh over a month ago. Um, I don't dare call any of those guys right now. Uh, I think that's a bad idea. So um, yeah, we envision it this being a restaurant, just a single level restaurant. It's possible it's something else. I, I don't really know how this pandemic is going to play out with restaurants and some of the bigger chains out there.
So then would it, sorry, I have a follow-up question. So then it would pro, progress, like progress into some professional buildings that you are talking about medical. Are those single level buildings or are they multi-level buildings when you go to the next block?
So the, the building that we have planned on Lot Four, and this is not a site plan, but the
Right.
the building is located on the west side of the parcel. It's a two-level building and it spans pretty much the full distance between the north property line or buildable area and the south property line buildable area.
Thank you, that's all.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. And, and as you pointed out, you know, this is not a, a site plan, so we'll get additional clarification and details. Um, you know, even to my question on sidewalks, things like that, as, as site plans come in, not only for this plat but for others. Uh, are there any additional questions or conversations from the planning commission relating to uh this plat subdivision?
Yeah, Anthony, this is Tim, and just a question for Steve. Um, with the subdivision, would most of these own the property once it's subdivided or will the developer retain ownership?
Uh, we've entered into a joint venture agreement with another developer and we will be owning uh, a portion of the, the project with that other developer.
So the individual tenants that, that come into the property will not own them. They'll, you, you and the other developer will retain ownership?
Uh, we do offer ownership interest into our buildings for our tenants if they would like to have ownership. Um, I, I don't know how much ownership they would be offered. It would be more on the, on a minimal side. Uh, us and the other developer would retain the majority of the ownership.
Okay, thank you.
And just to uh clarify, uh, when we offer our tenants ownership into the building, sometimes tenants like to have ownership or they want to own their own building. This gives, gives them an opportunity to be a part of a little bit larger building and still have some ownership. It's nice because they usually stay as tenants for a lot longer because they have that sense of ownership. That's why we give the ownership to the tenants or the, the option to buy into the buildings.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, great questions, Tim. Uh, any other questions or discussion that needs to take place prior to a motion?
This is Tim. I would make a motion then that we approve Yard Plat C subdivision uh partial and finalized presented by staff with the presented.
Just to clarify, that would be our, our recommendation.
Recommendation, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Do I have a second?
A second.
Alright, we'll go roll call again. Uh, Anthony, aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
And Shan?
Aye.
Alright, so it's passed through Planning Commission. We'll now turn it over to the mayor and the city council.
Hey Jake, can you make sure everybody on the city council has been unmuted? We'll move into four point three point two and if you could pull the maps back up so that the council can consider taking action tonight on this. Um, council, if you have anything, any comments or questions, if you could raise your hand, that would be great. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Oh, Chris, I see you.
I see you too, Julie.
I was feeling a little bit downtrodden that I didn't see your hand come up.
Well, I'm, I'm just planning on, since nobody said anything, to make a motion.
Okay, that's great.
Uh, unless somebody's opposed to it, but I, I'd like to make the motion to approve the Yard Plat C subdivision preliminary and final plats with the conditions as proposed, recommended by Planning Commission.
Excellent. Can I get a
A second.
That was Christie Welsh and then we'll go by row call and we have Christie.
Aye.
Tyce?
Aye.
Aye, that's me, Chris.
Aye.
And John.
Aye.
Okay, it looks like this carried. We'll move on to four point four. This is discussion and action, final plat approval of the sixteen hundred North extension road dedication and Elizabeth Hart will be presenting this.
Um, Jake, could you go to slide three?
Hold on, what did you say, Liz?
Can you go to side, slide three?
This?
Yep. Um, so this is the, so the applicant's proposing to dedicate four acres of public roadway to the city. Um, this is the plat, so it's six, the extension of sixteen hundred North. Um, this plat has been updated from what you're seeing now. Um, I'm hoping Pam uh uploaded the updated plat to Dropbox today. Um, and I'll go through those changes in a moment. So the applicant is proposing to extend sixteen hundred North from where it currently ends. So Jake, if you can go to slide four. You'll see that there's a cul-de-sac right now from what is existing. So the applicant's going to extend sixteen hundred North from that applicant to two hundred and fifty West on the left side of the screen. Um, that's about four acres. Um, it's so right now little triangle area is the CUWCD property, which has I think a pump house and a couple other built on it. And then there's a, a fence on the north side of that property, so the road is gonna go just above that. There's also gonna be a trail on this road on the south side, so that trail's gonna butt that road. And in the new updated plat, all that was added was an access easement for the CUWCD property. So from the cul-de-sac in, they'll just have an access easement that allows that's their property as well as a um utility easement, just run a little portion of sixteen hundred North that they need. And then they added in a note, note, and that's note six on the plat. Um, half is requesting or is uh recommending approval of this road dedication. And I think Don and Chris can answer any other engineering questions that you guys have.
Jake, can you use your cursor and scroll over the portion of the road that Liz explained?
Yep, from the cul-de-sac over.
Yep.
The portion that will be the public road, correct me if I'm wrong, Don or Chris, everything else to the east still remains a private road?
Yes. And if you want me to expound on that, I can.
Yes, please do.
So until the uh, the access at sixteen hundred across the rail tracks gets removed, uh, the trail gets removed in front of that access. That road that's been built to the cul-de-sac has been plotted as private, has to stay private. So uh, what we're recommending is we make this connection, then if um Anderson Geneva wants to restrict uh traffic on that road, then they can uh put barrier up. That way the applicant still has access off of two fifty west into his property, but it just won't be able to go all the way through to Geneva Road.
Don, um, when we do remove the spur line, is there anything additional that would have to happen to make, to upgrade the road to make it a public road? Or will it fit and it'll just be dedicated as public?
We are, we are having him build it to our standard, our standard width and everything. So when it is done, uh, when, when the track gets removed, then it becomes public. Now, the private roads, that's a different situation. There's gonna be some uh, things that are gonna have to happen to those private roads, but this road is built to a standard that won't have to be.
Okay, great. So sixteen hundred North will go, will be built to our standards from Geneva all the way to the lake portion of the railroad cross.
Yep, yes.
Okay, that's great. Council, do you have any questions or comments? If you do, please raise your hand. Okay, I am not seeing any questions or comments. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Tyce, go ahead.
I move that we approve item five point, or excuse me, we approve discuss, discussion item four point four, approval of the final plat. Approval of sixteen hundred North extension along with noted requirements by the staff.
Hey, and can I get a second?
As, Chris, I'll second.
Excellent. We'll go down our roll call. Christie?
Aye.
Tyce?
Aye.
Aye, Chris?
Aye.
And John?
Oh, there we go. Yeah, I, I just was able to unmute.
Perfect, okay. We will go ahead and I'll turn the time back over to Anthony for the ordinance and public hearing of the general plan land use map.
Alright, thank you, uh, city council. Uh, so where, what we're doing now is we're shifting over into um discussion on ordinances and public hearings. And the way that this will work is we will have the staff present um any updates here. And then uh, we will, we will open up a public hearing and take any public comments. And then the planning commission will consider this and take action. Based on the planning commission's actions, the mayor and city council will then have the ability to uh take further action tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff to give an update on five point one, uh, the general plan land use map amendment and zoning map amendment. Uh, and then we'll go from there.
Uh, great, thank you. Um, so this is the
Hey, Morgan, before you start, would you mind getting the presentation pulled up?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, this is the nitrogen Geneva general uh plan land use map amendment and a zoning map amendment. So if you remember, this is uh one of the agreements that we entered into with the property owner through the RDA approval process for cleanup and demolition was that um the property would be rezoned from I one, which is a heavy industrial zoning category that allows for um a very large open-ended uh slew of uses. And so it was one of those things being kind of a gateway into the city. We thought this would be a good time to um, to put a zoning category in place, like a commercial uh, or a, a, an I one type thing. So um, in speaking with the property owner and a potential buyer of the property, um, we've looked at um the parcel, which is twenty seven point three six acres of land and um they provided a proposal, a concept plan of how the property could, could be rezoned. And what that would do is essentially rezone the bulk of the property uh to twenty four point eleven acres uh plus the ride, the future right of way of twelve hundred North as it extends through the site um to a regional commercial and then two point uh six one three acres to business park to accommodate uh a potential office use there. Um, this right here is the proposed future land use map of, in the general plan. The current general plan uh didn't list a designation for this property. And so this would be adding um regional commercial land use category in the general plan. If you go to the next one, Jake. Um, this is the provo, proposed zoning map. Um, what it would do is, like I said, zone most of it to regional commercial and keep a portion, uh, the two point six acres uh for a, a business park use. The um, the applicant has indicated um that they would, that um, they would like to use the property as, as retail. Um, potentially some entertainment uses and then uh a, a office building. So staff is recommending approval of uh both the land use amendment and um the, the zoning map amendment. Um, the current property owner has requested that um if the planning commission recommends approval tonight, that the city council continue um their deliberation on item to the May thirteenth meeting. Um, that way their hope is that the sale will go through and then, uh, and then they can have the zoning finalized through the city council after um, the sales has gone through. So that, that's everything uh from staff. So basically it would be a planning commission recommendation on both the land use and the zoning map amendment. Um, with a request from the owner that the city council not take action, but continue this to the May thirteenth.
Alright, thanks, Morgan. And do we uh have the applicant here as well in case questions arise?
Um, yes, we, we did invite them, I believe Truett um is on, let's see if we can find him. There's Andy Flam uh and Truett. So Jake, if you wanna unmute Truett, I would let him start and then if Andy Flam wants to uh add it, maybe you just, just unmute both of them, Truett and Andy Flam.
I've got both unmuted.
Yeah.
Perfect, can you hear me? Okay, this is Truett.
Yes, yeah, please, anything you'd like to add on this and then uh we will be opening up a, a public hearing here momentarily and uh you may have questions from the public as well.
Okay, perfect. Well, just, just to be clear, um, I'm just the real estate agent that's helping the buyer acquire this land to develop it into their master plan. Uh, they feel like the use of that land can be used for a general use from the public, be it event center, office park, uh recreational facility, uh that would cater just to the demographic there.
Great, thanks for, for adding that. Great, thanks for, for adding that. I know you had a partner that was with you as well. Anything else from him?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, I'm representing the seller, and Morgan did a great job, so there's nothing for me. I think he already covered everything that we wanted to make sure that was on record.
Great. Okay. Staff, I may need a little guidance on this. We continued this public hearing, so I do, I do not need to open it, correct?
Oh, no, so this is a, this is a new public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, so the planning commission would open it, then
Open a new public hearing.
Consider it, make a recommendation, and then it goes to the city council.
Okay, so do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Make a motion to open public hearing.
All right, thanks, Shan, a second?
A second.
And then we're doing everything by roll call. Anthony, I, Jeff?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Shan?
Hi.
All right, we are now in public hearing. I, I know some people have been typing in their questions, and that's fine if, if you'd just like one of us to read it. But if you would like to speak and ask a question directly, please click the raise hand button on the participants tab, and we'll get to you. I, I see, Morgan, that David has raised his hand. If you wouldn't mind unmuting him, so we can ask his question.
All right, David, you should be good to go.
Hi, David Luray here, resident. I just have, just wondering what the lot six, the illustration there, I wonder what that is.
So that is a proposed fairway for a golf course.
Ah, I see. Very good, thank you. That's all.
Yeah, so this is Morgan, just to add to that. The, so there, there is the approval for the, the golf club, the driving range at the, the, the south of the megaplex. This is another potential landing spot for it. And so that would have to go through a site plan approval process. But anyway, we, we didn't want to get too, too into the weeds of what the future uses would be. But the staff report did, did show a concept plan provided by the, the applicant, or by the, the future property owner, the proposed property owner.
Yeah, thanks for fielding those questions. Any other public comment, please click the raise hand button, or at a minimum, type it in the, the group chat to everyone, and we'll be able to field those. I, I do see Chris. It looks like you're unmuted already. Go ahead.
So Morgan, I think you were saying that we don't currently have a business park zone, is that correct, or we do?
No, we, we do. There's one parcel zone business park, you remember, about three years ago down south. Yes. So this would, this would be the second parcel.
Okay, so we do already have that. So we're not adding any new zone, zones? These are all existing zones, just applying them to the land?
Right. The current RC doesn't allow for standalone office buildings, so that's why it would require a specific parcel be zoned BP.
And then my, my final question is just more for clarification purposes. So there, I guess, what, what additional reason? I mean, would, would the planning commission need to wait till May? I mean, I, I just, I don't understand the reason for getting an approval and then continuing immediately.
So, yeah, so the potential buyer, and this is what they've told me, and they, they can clarify on their end, but they would like to see the city moving towards approving a rezoning to accommodate the uses that, that they're suggesting. And so going through the planning commission, getting a, a recommended approval from the planning commission gives them some, some assurance, but the owner wanted us to hold off on getting it officially rezoned until the property went through the process. And they, they can add to that, but that, that was my general takeaway from it.
So it's not because they're trying to accumulate more information for the city council to have, that the planning commission wouldn't have? They would, they, they're essentially ready for it, they just want to wait.
Right, and maybe Andy or, or Truitt could, could add to that, but that, that's my, that's
Go ahead, Andy.
Well, it looks like Andy muted still. Hold on just a sec.
Well, he's going to unmute Andy. Again, if there's any other members of the public, please click raise hand. Otherwise, we'll be closing this shortly. So Andy, go ahead if you're unmuted.
Andy's on it. All right, thank you. Yes, Morgan stated it correctly. Really, the, the buyer wanted to get a temperature of the city, of the public, as well as planning commission. So they could move forward on their end, but from the seller's side, we didn't want to actually rezone the property until after the close had occurred. And so, yeah, the, the public hearing today is just kind of get a temperature from the residents and the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. All right, last call for public comment before we close the public hearing. All right, seeing none, do I have a motion from the planning commission to move, or to close the public hearing?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Thanks, Tim.
I second.
Thanks, Jeff. Anthony, I, Jeff?
Ryan.
Tim?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Shan?
Hi.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Thanks, everyone, for participating in that. Now amongst the planning commission, feel free, if you've got any additional questions or discussion that needs to take place. Jeff, I believe you had some questions.
Yeah, so, and some of this may or may not necessarily be something that needs to be considered as part of this, but one of the questions I had was what the soil conditions are out there after this, the previous use. If the, if those soils are suitable for the, the types of uses that are proposed, or if there needs to be remediation or something like that done to, to accommodate a commercial use on that property. And then the other one was about the access points. I know, Morgan, you clarified that we're not approving this as a site plan. It's a concept site, and what we're approving is, is, is the amendment to the general plan of the uses. But I would just be curious, you know, with the rail spur there, with Geneva Road and the traffic that's anticipated on Geneva Road, how the access points are going to work for this, this property coming in off of Geneva Road and, and how that, maybe that's more of an engineering question, but it doesn't, and again, that might not need to be resolved today, but those are just kind of concern and questions that came up as we've been looking at this.
Right, I know Don has worked, he's worked a lot with, with UDOT and, and Norm City on this. So if he wants to jump in, he would have a, you know, a pretty clear answer on where they approved access points would be.
So we have, the access management plan with UDOT basically gives this piece of property two access points, one at 1200 North and one at 1400 North. The one at 1200 North would be a full signalized access. The 1400 North would be a full intersection, but not signalized. So this has really good access. Now, both those roads, we're hoping to continue through all the way to Mill Road, so that we have access back behind this property. So that's, that's kind of where the access is. They'll be coming through those two points. Now, right now with the rail spur there, they don't have, they have one access point that's been approved, but it's not right at 1200 North. They'll have to work with that until the access points, you know, until we get the rail pulled and we get the access points where they need to be.
Turning timeline on the rail spur being removed?
Well, we're working as hard as we can. We've got UDOT now getting ready to put the design out for the, the rail on realignment. And so we're hoping that designer will be on board within, in the next two months. And then we're a whole lot closer than we were six months ago.
Yeah, good questions. I, I see, Chris, you've got your hand raised still. I believe you're muted, though. While we're waiting for Chris to go off mute. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Sorry, that's a user error. If my hand is raised, I apologize.
Okay. No worries. Planning Commission, any, any additional questions or comments or concerns on this zoning change?
Just a real quick question for Morgan. Can you remind me again what the difference is between business park and commercial, the regional commercial?
Yeah, sure thing. So regional commercial is the zoning district that allows for large-scale, you know, shopping centers. It allows for, you know, the small uses as well. But it does not allow for standalone professional office. So that's why the business park is an important one, because that, that allows for a standalone office building. So that, that's why the property is basically split zoned to, to allow a parcel with the BP zoning district.
And just for, for information, part of the reason we don't see a lot of business park zoning in our city currently is the town center zoning, which we'll hear a lot about here momentarily, does accommodate a lot of that, that standalone office space. So just because you don't see a lot of business park zoning, this is mostly for the public's good, doesn't mean that you won't see business park-like activities. The town center does contain quite a bit of that.
So Anthony, this is Tim, just a quick question about, was there any reason that that particular plot was chosen for the business park versus any other location?
I'll, I'll let, I'll let staff with the applicant to speak to that one.
Yeah, so just, so you know, this is a, a city-initiated application, so the city's actually applicant. The, the, these are the potential buyers. True, that's who Truitt is representing. And I've worked with them to create the, the proposed zoning map, because that's what was requested through the RDA approval. But if Truitt, if you could kind of add some, you know, some information as to why you thought that would be a, a good office park parcel, or office parcel, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Morgan. So the reason why there's that little small zone of, of a office, office building is due to the fact that we actually have a buyer lined up and ready to go vertical on that build. They feel like adding more office space next to recreational facilities such as a golf fairway or driving range would bring, well, the business meeting would do well with it being great, great exposure from the freeway.
Thank you. Thanks for that insight. Any additional questions by the planning commission?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
And so Don said something about how the, how the, the access road is going to connect to Mill Road across that section. That, that strip doesn't look wide enough. Maybe it's just because of context of how I'm looking at it. But is that, is the west side of that project, Don is saying, is going to hope is that that would connect all the way through to Mill Road? Does that make sense?
Morgan, this is Truitt. Do you have the concept plan there by chance that we can show?
Yeah, Jake, do you have, I can pull it up on my end too, but Jake, if you have what I sent you over. If not, I, I can, I can pull it up. Just take me a second.
Did you email it to me?
I did. It was, it was part of the original PowerPoint, but I, I didn't want to get caught up on like site plan stuff.
Yeah. The access question that was
Yeah, absolutely. So Jake, if you're, I'll, I'll look for it, but if you find it first, then throw it on.
Now, that, the reason why I won't pull it up, that would give Shan a, a good concept of what Don was referring to when the
Jake, is this what's on slide nine, I think? Oh, no, we didn't have it.
The staff report as well, that it's, it's more of just like a screenshot dropped in.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. That's why I'm kind of going, how does that connect to? It, it just didn't look, it might be wider than the way that I'm viewing it. So it didn't look like it was wide enough to connect all the way down into Mill Road. So that's why I was asking the question. It's just about access, so.
Thank you. That, hopefully everybody can see that concept plan now. Where 1200 North is to the right of that, of that image, that road is supposedly going to extend through the, the joint property owner's property, that's Anderson Geneva. They in fact do have a master concept plan for how that road should look.
Okay.
So that's, that's the road that will connect from Geneva Road to Mill Road.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Thanks, Shan. It, it does look like, Don, I see your hand raised, and then we'll get to you, Jeff. Don, did you have anything else to add?
Well, no, I was just going to try to explain it to her, but it's, you can see it now, so it's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good now, Don. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Don. Jeff?
Um, yeah, I just saw here Andy Flam said that he can address the question that I asked, the soils. So Jake, if you can just undo Andy Flam, then he said he would address that question.
Yeah, you bet. Jeff, the seller and the owners of Geneva Nitrogen have been working with the state's voluntary cleanup program of the contaminated soil since the early 2000s, and are in the final stages of that right now. So we're, we're expecting something in the next few months to have a clean bill of health from the state.
Awesome.
Yeah, good update. Thank you. Any additional questions by the planning commission?
Ready to make a motion if we need.
Yeah, if you're ready to make a motion, please, please go ahead.
Sure. Before making a motion, just wanted to comment on this. The zoning changing from industrial to basically anything else is good for the city and good for our general plan. And even though I'm sure the RDA and the city council, when it comes up, are going to have lots of questions about a potential for big shots and stuff being there. I think that as far as the zoning goes, it looks good. So I want to make a motion that I move to recommend approval of ordinance 2020-03 for the Geneva Nitrogen General Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment.
Thanks, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, and we'll do a roll call on this one. Anthony, yay? Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Shan?
Hi.
All right, it looks like it passes. We will move on to 5.1.2 with the mayor and city council, and they can choose to take whatever action they deem necessary tonight.
Thank you, Anthony. Jake, if you could make sure all of the city council is unmuted. City council, I'm just going to open this up for some commentary. If you have any questions, otherwise, we can move into making a motion. I see Chris's hand raised. Go for it.
Well, if somebody wants to comment, I'm just going to make a motion to continue based upon the applicant's request.
Okay, are there any comments or other questions?
Hold on, I'm just trying to unmute everybody. I got Christie unmuted. I got John unmuted. Yeah, I think you're good.
Being a host is a big job. You're doing great, though. Okay, are there any other comments by the council? If not, Chris is going to make a motion. Okay, seeing that there are none, Chris, go for it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue 5.1.2 to the May 13th, 2020 city council meeting.
And can I get a second? Sorry, can, is that John?
John, yep, second.
That's John, and we're going to do this by roll call. Christie?
Hi.
Tyce?
Hi.
I, Julie, Chris?
R.
R, nice, and John.
Yay.
Okay. Looks like we're going to turn the time back over to Anthony to start us out on 5.2.
Oh, Anthony's muted.
He will just give Jake a couple minutes to get the planning commission rolling.
I wish, I wish I could homeschool my kids with the mute buttons.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm in business now. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the last item of the agenda tonight. All right, I'm in business now. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the last item of the agenda tonight. 5.2 zoning text and map amendment to the Town Center Form Based Code, Special Zoning District 3. We will let staff present. This is something that has been continued from a previous planning commission, and we will also have public hearing on this one. So I'd encourage any members of the public to get your questions ready if you have some after staff is able to run through some of the changes and proposed amendments. So go ahead, staff.
Thank you, Anthony. And I'd like to give a shout out and thank, big thanks to all the staff members who helped participate in in getting this this ordinance reviewed and to planning commissioners and the city council. I know Tyce has spent many, many nights up reviewing this, and I think we've we've gone through three revisions now with the applicant. Also, thank you to the applicant for for working to to accommodate all of staff's suggestions. I'll make my presentation brief. As you have been presented the downtown project probably 10 times over the last four months, and specifically the text amendment, I think I think it's gone through, you know, a few times, and we've all reviewed it. So Jake, if you could drop down to the next slide. So I'm going to highlight just a few of the of the amendments, kind of the the items that were were sticking things. If the council or the planning commission is concerned about anything else, we're happy to pull up the code. We can get into as much detail as you'd like. I think we've we've done that to to a pretty large extent. So if you look at this map here, it shows one of the comments was from last time was to extend the lakefront commercial district all the way to the north, and you'll see that's been done. Also, the public facilities for the station on the north and the city office parcel south of the of the lakefront promenade, the lake promenade have been designated pub, 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 I'm sorry, as public facilities, and the acreage has been increased to 1.2. I do want to highlight that. I think that that's a pretty important thing to point out that 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 is a pretty nice benefit to the city and will help accommodate future expansion of our of our office facilities when the time comes. It puts us in a pretty nice spot, actually, right on the lake. So the acreages have been changed. Geneva Park has, they've took the educational facilities off of that. Staff's concern was that what we wanted was that the Geneva Park be more of a shared space so that if there is a school next to it, we didn't want the school to be on the Geneva Park, but that they could share the the open space of our park. And that's that's what one of our parks does now with with the organic park. They they utilize that quite a bit. But we didn't necessarily want to designate the open space as educational facility, so that was changed. The Lake Road, if you look kind of where there's a callout between the two promenades on the lake, there was a point of the engineering department would like the road to go straight adjacent to the north promenade. Whereas the applicant has proposed kind of the the boardwalk idea and leaving the orientation on the lake. We felt that that's a future project that the city needs to undertake is is doing a really good detailed design on our full lakefront. So we didn't want to be married to either option, and we felt like if we just put the road as a possible alternate location going straight as opposed to the the current alignment, then we could deal with that at another time. The Lake Trail was shown and the and the trail adjacent to the the rail, the rail trail was also shown in here as well. So Jake, if you could jump to the to the next one. One of the other big items was the residential amenities. The applicant provided us a a different option from the old code. What this option says is it provides us basically two different checks that we look at for each residential unit. The first is that within an eight mile, eighth mile of any residential unit, three of these amenities shown below would be would be provided. So any resident within the development would have access to that, to to any of those. And if you go to the next one, Jake. This next one is is a one fourth mile. So three of these items, fitness center, pool, hot tub, splash pad, sports courts, plaza, season a little bit like the larger items. Three of those would be located within a fourth mile of any residential unit. This was a they were trying to address the concerns of the planning commissioner city council that, you know, that we still have amenities, but that the amenities be more of a a community use and not not just individual buildings. So that that's how that that part was written. You can jump to the next one, Jake. Our favorite topic, parking. I'm sure we may get a comment or two on this. Just to kind of run through what the parking says. So staff, just so you know, staff is not really concerned with the commercial parking. So I didn't really list those in this slide. What we have found time and time again, commercial uses tend to want to overbuild parking more than what the city would actually like. And so like we're dealing with one use right now that wants to come to the city, and they're wanting eight parking stalls per thousand square feet, which is really massive. So typically from the commercial side, for financing reasons and other things, they 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 kind of come in. It's a market driven solution. It's not something that the we necessarily need to have in the zoning warrants. We have it just because it's, you know, it's just there. So I didn't really feel like we need to get into that. But what the parking requirements do are a few things. The code allows on-street parking on all street types. It does provide the city engineer the ability to make adjustments for fire lanes or if they need to have a space for a utility vehicle on each block. There was some concern about that. They could red curb. They could still provide engineering, the engineer could designate timed parking. So if we wanted to make like three or four hour parking on certain streets so that we wouldn't get long-term residence residential you parking on like our our heavy retail areas, then that that could we could kind of control it like that. So it still provides Don the flexibility to 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 work with the infrastructure in a way that makes sense and so that we're we're not having long-term residential storage next to a restaurant that wants the onset parking for customers. The next one is the parking per, oh, no, sorry, go go back up. The well, what the one area where staff is concerned is residential parking. We have seen kind of some issues in the past. They've worked really diligently with Ryan Hales, the traffic engineer, and with Professor Reed Ewing from the University of Utah. And Professor Ewing, and I'm sorry, I know I'm jacking your name up, but he is a he is he is essentially the Yoda of TOD and mixed-use parking. He, I believe he's studied over 400 mixed-use developments, and so he's provided a lot of a lot of help in in kind of getting the parking numbers established. What we've worked with the applicant, can we notice is a sticky issue. But we have, from the original proposal, we asked that they bump up the parking. So how how it reads now, this is more than what was originally proposed, and this is more than what Reed was suggesting, and I'm sure he'll he'll kind of add some to this, was that we have one parking space per bedroom, but a maximum of two parking spaces per unit. And then the code before didn't didn't specify how many visitor spaces were required per unit. And so we were asking that point two five visitor parking spaces be required per unit. And I believe that translates to like 11,000, like 90 spaces, but so it's over 11,000. And that so that adds about another 2,000 parking spaces to what was originally proposed in in one of the drafts. And so and I know that might be an area that the applicant would like to to discuss because we're asking more than what is shown in Reed's studies. The average requirement, we're asking basically for 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 quite a few more than what that was. But we felt comfortable with that. What we did do is we provided a provision that if, you know, once we get to 1,000 units and 100,000 square feet of of office and and the project starts to get built out, the code allows for the city planner and the city engineer to look at a study of the built conditions of the downtown. So the applicant would pay for a study. They commissioned one. And we would look at it, and if it should, because, you know, it would be built, we'd be able to actually see it in real time. But if the study shows that that it's overparked with those numbers, then it would allow us to 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 lower the the parking. Now, the reason why that's important is because the RDA is investing a substantial amount of resources into the parking structures, which is a great thing because it helps this plan to to be built as we want it. But we also don't want to overbuild parking because that's that's kind of, it's a bad thing to put public dollars towards an over an overparked day. We want the parking to kind of fit the use, so allows us to adjust as as it builds out. And then also, this is a request, and so this is a condition, that if you choose to approve the ordinance, that we add another condition that we require point eight spaces per occupant of student housing units. Because there are times where you get a student, if they do student housing and they put six students in one unit, then if we base it off the occupant occupants of each unit, then that that could give us kind of a good equivalent amount of parking for the students that are going to be there.
Morgan, can you explain what student housing is as far as a designation? Because obviously, anyone can rent any place. But is it is it a special designation? Is it reserved only for students? What what is student housing by definition?
Yeah, exactly. So student housing is actually designated student housing. Typically, they have shared facilities, allow bathroom or kitchen facilities that are shared between a few units. And then each one of those units have, it's like a dormitory type setup where they have a few beds. I'm sure there's some some really fancy ones out there that are a little larger, but for the most part, it's where they they share, you know, bathroom facilities, kitchen area. And then there's, you know, there's there's multiple beds in each room. And so that that would be an actual, an actual like designated product that.
It's not just any place that a student is renting, correct?
Right, right. And so the applicant has indicated that they, in the future, may look at doing some student housing, which honestly would be a pretty good thing for the downtown. Having having a lot of students would would really help out restaurants and nightlife. But we want to make sure we can accommodate them through through our parking codes. So we wanted to put this to the point eight would actually translate to quite a bit more parking than than the standard parking for like con committed units.
So staff is recommending that additional condition if this is if this is recommended. Okay.
Right. And Jake, you can ju- jump to the next one. Okay, this is a there. There was a request that we designate retail on ground floor. This is the map that that does that, does it around the north promenade on, I guess we're calling it the kind of the square about the traffic square on the north along the boardwalk and then near the train plaza and Market Street. We'll most definitely get more retail in other places, but we wanted to make sure that we preserved the ground floor in those areas so that we don't get residential units where you need nightlife and people walking. You do want restaurants and retail spaces, so there's more activity. You go to the next one. So staff has recommended approval of the ordinance, and we would like a few conditions added. The first one is is just more of a condition to the approval. What it would be is that the TIS to be updated and submitted to the city engineer prior to construction of roadways based on approved road configurations.
Can you can you explain that out, the the TIS?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. TIS is Traffic Impact Study. And hopefully I got that that correct. Don can correct me if I'm wrong. But it was the one that was submitted was based off of an earlier configuration, and so we would like an updated TIS to address the current configuration. Did I get that right, Don?
Yes.
Great. The second one would be to amend the ordinance graphics and text to ensure parking strips maintain a minimum of eight feet in width. There were some that were shown with six feet, and we've had issues in the past where we've overs where we get a lot of overspray into the street with these with park strips are less than eight. I don't know if you want to add to that or not, Don?
No, I'm good.
Okay. And then the third is that amend the ordinance to add the parking category for student housing in all districts requiring a minimum of eight parking spaces, or I'm sorry, a point eight parking spaces per unit occupant. And I you might want to say with no cap because the other one, we do cap the unit at two. So you may want to, and I can help you out if you make a recommendation for for approval, but it would be no cap on the student housing. That that's everything from staff. There's obviously more items, but we've discussed pretty much everything that's in the code. We've discussed that on previous meetings. So that that's what we've got. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Morgan. We are in a continued public hearing here. So Morgan, do I need, do we need to take any action to open this, or is it continued here?
No, so we, because we had a council the last meetings due to the the virus, that basically the continuation went away, and we had to then renotice. So it's all been renoticed. So all right, officially reopen the public hearing.
Okay, so I think what we'll do at this point is open a public hearing, and then after we close that, then planning commission can discuss amongst ourselves here and consider this and take action. So do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
This is Tim. My sole motion.
All right, thanks, Tim. A second?
Bryce Brady, I'll second it.
All right, Anthony, aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Shan?
All right, I just unmuted Shan.
Aye.
All right. All right, we are now in a public hearing specifically about the Town Center Form Based Code. So if any members of the public would like to click raise hand or type their question in the chat group, we'll get to you here. I see a couple here. We'll do David first. Jake or Morgan, if you could unmute David. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. My question, I put in the chat as well. Given that we've we've learned from the COVID-19 outbreak about the disadvantages of packing lots of people in the tight places, do we still think it wise to create a transit oriented district in our town center, which is inclusive, you know, plans for for high rises and crowded train cars? We're reliant upon those things. Do we still think it's wise?
Thanks for the question, David. I can only speak for myself. I would say yes, I still think it's wise. I'm no health expert. I will caveat with that, but I do believe that, you know, there's a there's a place for all all types of housing, and I think this is a great place for transit. I do think we're learning different things from this this pandemic right now, and I think it's important that we consider that on how we can make sure that if people are in tight spaces, that we keep it safe. I will defer to any others if they want to add their 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 comments or or answer that. But thank you, David, for the question.
Well, and this is Morgan, sorry. I think that's something that applicant could, when they when they have their their remarks after we receive public comment, they could they could address that.
Okay, good idea. So David, we'll we'll let the applicant speak to that as well, but I do appreciate you bringing that up, and it's a very timely question.
Thank you.
Looks like Amber has a question. If we get her unmuted. Go ahead, Amber.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In response to David Larray, I've sent Anthony and Morgan information about, I guess, high standards for ventilation and things like that in the residential areas. I think that might be something that's helpful. We make sure we're, you know, building well-ventilated places and being concerned with high standards regarding those sorts of things. That can help reduce transmission, I believe. The eight-foot park strip is better for trees if you need another reason to support that. Someone else speaking?
No, I think it's just you. Maybe a little bit of feedback, but go ahead, continue.
And then is there a way that we can make sure that not all of the amenities are going to be the same? I know I talked to Pam a little bit about it, and there was a concern that. I know I talked to Pam a little bit about it, and there was a concern that the vast majority of the amenities would be biking storage, bike storage. So can we say, you know, a limited number of specific things in an area or? Any suggestions?
Yeah, Morgan, maybe I'll let you speak to that because I know you, and maybe we could go back to the slides that show the amenities within an eighth of a mile, a quarter of a mile. There, there was, yeah, three of the following. So even if, you know, all of them were bike storage, there'd be at least two others, is my understanding. But Morgan, go ahead and speak to that.
Yeah, so they they do have to have three of the following. How it's written now, I don't believe it would mean they could do three bicycle storage facilities and have that count. My interpretation of the code as it's written is there would be three of these. So they actually didn't be a checkbox. You go, okay, playground, water feature, bike storage.
Okay. And that's not, I mean, given, you think an eighth of a mile or in a quarter of a mile are big enough that?
So essentially, you would have
That's good enough?
Yeah, you would have si- six of these within, within a quarter of a mile. So if you, if you go to the next one, Jake, that, so they'd have to pick three of these as well within a quarter of a mile. So you would, you would get six. So that that's actually pretty good. Our our concern is that you would have some, you know, you'd have kind of amenities clustered just in buildings. We wanted to kind of ensure that 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 these also met the goal of being walkable, that we had, you know, facilities that had people kind of provided a social environment for the community as well. It wasn't just kind of contained in each individual building.
So it's fine then if every eighth of a mile, there's bike storage, if every single time that one selected?
Yeah, I mean, we, that's a huge, that's a huge goal for the city is is to have, and that, and the applicant could could respond to that in their comments as well. But from the city's standard general plan, we we are pushing bike facilities on a large scale. So I think that'd be a good.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
To add a little bit to what Amber was saying is, are we going to see all of those things? Like, are we going to see bike storage, community gathering, playground, water feature, barbecues, and pocket park in the whole development? Or are we just going to see? I I think kind of adding to what she's saying, are we just going to see three of the same thing over and over again? And they're listing six, but they're really only going to do three of those?
Yeah, let's have, if if Pete is on, I don't know if we want to have him do his presentation and then address it in his presentation, or he can, he can speak to it now. That should probably come from now.
Great. I'd be happy to. Appreciate the time. And and just to reiterate what Morgan said, you know, we we really appreciate staff's time in working through this and the and the planning commission, city council. I know that everybody has pulled out all the stops to try to get through such a big process as quickly as we can, and we really appreciate it. You know, I Morgan mentioned that this was our fourth or fifth public meeting, and obviously in between there, there's been countless hours spent on staff's part reviewing iterations of things that we proposed and working through different ideas that we've had and trying to come up with the best plan that that we can all collectively come up with. And so we appreciate where we are right now with the recognition of how we got here, and it wasn't without a lot of work and effort on on the city's part. And we really appreciate that. So the answer to, the short answer to your question is our plan is to put a variety of these throughout the community. So for example, if, you know, you look at just for example, the the promenade area, you know, we're looking at programming that in different sections and having different areas of the promenade have different different recreational amenities and different themes. So the plan is to kind of do the same thing throughout the community, although you know, there there will be different consolidations of amenities in different areas depending on what the uses surrounding it are. So for example, where there's a highly residential area, those amenities might be slightly different than where there's more commercial or retail areas. So so the the plan is to have a variety of amenities, make sure that we have them spaced out on, in the plan so that they're all accessible to both the residents and the and the people who are just walking in there for either work or or retail shopping.
Thanks, Pete.
So this is, just as Tim, to follow up on Amber's question and Pete's comment, just doing the math. So let's say every eighth of a mile, we have three of these particular amenities. And then every quarter of a mile, we have the other amenities, three of them. Does that mean that two eighths of a mile is a quarter of a mile? So will you have doubling up of the eighth mile amenities every eighth of a mile? I'm not sure if that question is clear or not, but I'm just trying to run the math because
Yeah.
In a quarter.
Yeah, Tim, you're right. So they they actually do overlap. So you'll have the eighth of a mile will run independently from the quarter mile amenities.
Okay.
The quarter mile amenities are meant to be a little bit larger. The eighth of a mile are more neighborhood in use, and so they do overlap. It's not like you, the quarter mile will count for the eighth of the mile once half the time.
That's what I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thanks, Tim, and thanks, Pete, for clarifying there. I think we have another, since we are in the public hearing, I think we had a question from Christie. Christie, I believe you're unmuted. Go ahead with your question.
Yeah, I just thought the conversation you guys were having was good about the amenities. I I agree that it's very likely you could just pick the same things repetitively. I'm, I I agree that, you know, bike storage was on everyone. That's great. It does fill a lot of the things that we're trying to do to be a bikeable community. But the one that says barbecues for me is a concern. Does that mean they can just buy a barbecue every? You know, what does barbecues plural mean? Are we talking, you know, I I think I would think maybe if some of these features had a little more clarification, because I feel like buying a barbecue is significantly different than putting in a playground.
Yeah, Pete, could you speak to to what's exactly meant there? And perhaps we even would recommend clarifying the language based on your response?
Yeah, so a lot of these features were taken off the prior code on, you know, amenities that were encouraged in public areas. And so that's a good example of those. So the the idea here would be just to kind of make sure that when we're making recreational amenities, that they're usable and that that they're where people would want to congregate. Barbecues is one of the things that that does that. So, you know, this isn't this, this, this would be like a commercial park barbecue that would be durable and longstanding and part of a park amenity, not like we left a hibachi halfway down the trail an eighth of a mile away and down it. So, you know, the, these are just kind of some guidelines that we took out of the old code to 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 make some standards for what would be in these community gathering areas. And then the idea here obviously is that these are, these are kind of the the trade off for that public and private open space. And then there was a question when we first started up, what about the individual buildings? And those so these will be in addition to the amenities that go into those individual buildings. And even though they're not, you know, code driven, in other words, we're taking the amenities and we're taking them outside the actual building like Morgan said, and putting in the public areas. But, you know, they they will be more market driven. And so you know, if there's a, for example, a multifamily building, and the market says to be an attractive multifamily building, you need these three amenities in the building, those three amenities will also go in the building in addition to these ones in the public areas. So so I I understand the question kind of as far as the barbecues go, but you know, each of these would be public use rated, just like anything else that we would be doing in a public space, whether it be playgrounds or benches or trash enclosures, barbecue areas, and they're, they're just kind of meant to be amenities that would make those areas a little more usable and a little more attractive.
And just as a follow up, thank you, Pete. I, I love the comfort, the sentiment that you're bringing up and I'm sure you guys will do a commendable job of doing, you know, a high quality product. I would just feel more comfortable personally having some clarification on some of these items, just because I have seen projects before that guaranteed things like water feature and seeing that not play out the way we thought it would. And again, trusting somebody would do a good something good with that. And by not having some clarification, in turn, the city was the one that was not happy with the product. And so I don't know. I I think personally, I'd rather, I'd like to see some extra language in there.
Yeah, the, I think the challenge would be, and we can work with staff on that if if you want, on just kind of you know, and maybe that happens more at the site planning process, where, you know, we're, we're giving more details on those things, and there's an, there's an approval process that would come back through planning commission at least, I believe. I don't know if it would go to city council. I know it would go through planning commission on the site plan in each of those open space areas. But I think, for example, like a water feature, putting it in from you know, where this, this was just something directly from the old code and translated it over. It would be hard to put a standard of, you know, what a, what would a water, what would a water feature be? I think that's kind of what that site planning process is really for.
I'm wondering if staff maybe have, have some thoughts on this. I I feel like we're still talking like, you know, it comes back to that conversation we've had in the past where it's like we want a guarantee, but how do you get a guarantee? And and so I feel like this is a really good step in into the direction of what we've been asking for in terms of getting a guarantee, if you will. And so I really like this plan you guys have come up with. I'm just, I feel like I just want like a tiny bit more. And I'm just curious if Morgan or Jake, if you guys understand maybe what I'm saying and have any ideas.
Yeah, more, there are a couple other people with hands raised, but Morgan, maybe you could just speak to what the city could do or will do as far as like code enforcement of any of this and how we'll ensure that these amenities go in and what level of rigor they'll go through before they're implemented.
Yeah, so as we've talked about, there's the the three things with zoning, you want to be clear, concise, and objective. And so, and I, and I, so I totally understand the the concerns that have been brought up regarding these. You know, like, if if you want it in the language, I mean, you could add a few things if, because secure is is a little bit more generally, you could say secure and covered bicycle storage. With, with the barbecues, you could say barbecue areas with a pavilion. So it's a little bit more substantial. We do have a definition of pocket park, so we don't, we don't need to add more to that. Playground is pretty self explanatory. You know, I I think you would kind of anticipate one that you would see in a, in a standard, you know, like, like the minimum you would get is is one you'd see like in a apartment complex, but it could be something more substantial. So I don't know if we need to do anything on that. Water feature, you know, if you I'm not overly concerned. I know we we did have an issue with the Dairy Queen project where a water feature was promised, and we got a fountain that never got hooked up. That just sits outside outside the building. So I do know what Christie's concerned about. But I think on some of these, like secure parking, you could add covered. Because like, like BYU has their, they have their secured bicycle parking, and they're basically it's a pavilion with the cameras inside, and they're covered, and they work wonderful. And there, there's hundreds of bikes on. The, you know, like I said, barbecue, you could add with with pavilion so that it's not just a, you know, one barbecue stand, but maybe it's a, it's more of a gathering spot that that's covered that could be utilized at a higher level. So I think there's some things we could just add right into this if you wanted to.
I think that's all. I think if we just maybe changed it to a little more of a sentence that's a little more clarifying for, that'd be great.
Thanks, Christie, for your comments. Morgan, that's helpful feedback on what we could do upfront to ensure some of these. Could you also just speak to how the enforcement would work? Like, for example, you know, you mentioned a water feature that was never hooked up. How could, you know, lessons learned? How could we ensure that you know, we see these things through to to finish? What what would be our our approach here to to enforce that?
Yeah, unfortunately, that that case was when we had basically one or two staff members, and so it just
Understood.
Hard to really enforce it. With this, whatever is approved through the site plan, we would ensure, and Liz is an expert at this. She she goes out and she inspects every project for any of the amenities and architectural stuff. So we would, we would look at that really closely. So the site plan would be really important, that the site plan clearly identified the amenities that went with each of those residential units. And then we would we would make sure that they were implemented as shown in the plan. The thing is, though, like I said, the zoning, if you want it to be really enforceable, has to be clear, concise, and concise and objective. And so it's, if you're wanting to to make sure that it's more than just a secured bicycle rack, then you need to say covered, or you need to say, you know, you need to add maybe a little bit more language if 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 you're, if you're not, if you think it's too open ended. That would be my suggestion.
Got it. Thanks, Morgan. I do want to make sure that we get to everyone while we're still in a public hearing. So I I think the next person is Liz that had their hand raised. You're unmuted. Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that in your staff reports, there is a comparison to the general plan of this code. And that, I'm, basically, everything the code's been saying meets all of our goals and strategies that the general plan has pointed out. The one thing that I would say is the open space requirement that the general plan says is like nine acres of open space per 1,000 residents, which I believe the general plan was saying has a municipality. That's how many acres of open space we should have. But the town center only does about two acres per 1,000 residents, which doesn't include our lake shore, our trails, the pedestrian ways, and the possibility of those your pocket parks or plazas that they might put in. So I don't really have a concern about it not meeting the amount of open space that we want our residents in the town center specifically to have. But as a whole, it does really meet the vision that the general plan has set out for us to have as a city. Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thanks, Liz. All right, let's go to Chris. I believe your hand's raised and you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I just want to echo what's been said already as, you know, kind of a personal opinion as a resident. Concern, concerns of what Morgan brought up in terms of we need to be, we need to detail in there what we want. And I think that's beneficial to the city and to the developer and to the resident. So being more precise with what is required would be important. The other concern I have would be, so for example, if we look at the one, you know, amenities within an eighth of a mile, are we okay if all three of those are found in one location? If you have a pocket park with some barbecues and secure bike storage in one location, is that the intent to have it in just one location? Or is the intent to have them, you know, different locations throughout? Same thing with the quarter mile. Just getting clarification there is, are these in one location or is it spread out within that radius of an eighth of a mile? And then the last comment I would have is typically there's, there's levels of, obviously here, of what we would consider, hey, this is tier A, we want that. This is tier B, we want that. And tier C, we want that. Is, is, do we break them up and say you have to have one of tier A, one of tier B, and one of tier C? So those are just some general comments that I have on on that subject right now.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. And that does speak to Morgan's encouragement to be, you know, clear and concise for everyone's benefit.
And Anthony, this is Tim on secure bicycle storage. Not all bicycle storage is equal. You can have it sufficient for eight bikes or for forty bikes. So I think we need to be talking about the number of bikes as well, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, speaking to, yeah, being specific there. So thanks, Tim. All right, I think there was one other person that had their hand up. Don, he lowered his hand. He got tired of keeping it up there. You're unmuted if you still have anything to say.
I just wanted to say that we have a tool to guarantee something gets constructed, and that's called the bonding. So if if we're designing something and we're concerned about that, then then requiring a bond to make sure it gets built. We didn't do that with the the strip mall out there at Geneva Road, and that's was the problem we had there. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, thanks, Don. So Morgan, hearing that and, you know, lessons learned from the past, would uh, would, would it be appropriate in any place within the ordinance to, to place bonding requirements or what, what are your thoughts on that?
I don't, I don't think we need to have the, the bonding requirements in because we can, I mean, it's basically already something that, that is allowed. Anything on the site plan that is shown as a, as an amenity, landscape and or open space connected to a specific project will need to be installed prior to CFO or they can bond. And then, you know, if there's weather conditions, uh, things like that, there's, we, we do allow bonding and I think we follow the state code. Don would know, um, probably a bit more on the bonding because his department covers that, but that's, that's typically how we do it. They do the amenities prior CFO or they bond for it, um, to get the CFO. And then they, you know, if they don't build it, then we, we can collect on the bond.
Got it. Um, I, Jeff, I see you've got a question. I'll come to you in just a, just a moment. I want to do one last call for any public comment before we close this public hearing and planning commission considers internally. Give just a moment here for anyone to chat or raise their hand. Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to move out of the, or to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I second it.
All right. I think that was Bryce on the second. He got you, Tim.
That was Tim.
All right. Uh, so Anthony, aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
And Shan?
Aye.
All right. The public hearing for, for this topic is now closed. So, um, Jeff, I know you had a question as a planning commissioner.
Yeah, so, um, it's, well, so first just on the amenities discussion we were having, I don't want to beat that one too far into the ground, but my, my suggestion is maybe in the goal of making sure that these get, the amenities are dispersed, perhaps there's an additional requirement that, you know, that all the residences, and I don't know how this works out spatially over the plan, but that all the residences have access to all of those listed amenities within a one mile or a half mile radius or something so that, just to ensure that you get the diversity of, of the types of amenities that are listed instead of having just the same one repeated over and over. So that's my suggestion on that discussion point. The other question I wanted to bring up was just the slide you brought up, Morgan, on the non-residential ground floor designation. If you can pull that back up. So the way, and it's obvious that, that, you know, the pink lines here are where we would be requiring non-residential ground floor uses. To me, the biggest area that maybe is missing that, and, and may, there might be a good reason why, but I'm just wondering why we're not doing that along Main Street.
Yeah, so, uh, how it's written is Main Street can have, um, they, they can have red retail. The, the market street itself was, even though I, I know maybe it's a little confusing because you have one called Main Street, the other Market Street. The Market Street was seen as being, um, more of the, like the traditional Main Street, the really tight, shared pedestrian space. It's going to have pavers and a real special design, so it's shared between traffic and pedestrians. And so that was the idea was to make that kind of the real hub of retail activity. And so, and, and what might be good too is, um, because the applicant has prepared a presentation and I probably should have said that earlier, but, um, it, you know, I, I think we could continue kind of discussing this, but I, I would let them, um, present. And they, they also want to talk about, um, the parking. And so we do have Reed and Ryan on the call that, that can talk through some of the parking things, but, um, please, please continue, but that, that, that was kind of my comment. We looked at Market Street as being more the retail hub. Main Street does allow for ground floor retail if, if, if it's, if it's more of it. But you could have the applicant address, um, if we could put a Pete line or if you guys want to put a Pete line there as well.
Okay. It's good to know that they've got a, got something here, here to share. Before we lead into that, um, Morgan, you, you mentioned, uh, about commercial parking requirements. And oftentimes, you know, they, they already have, uh, requirements even beyond what we have. Is it burdensome and cumbersome and going against the clarity and the concise, uh, recommendation for us to have, uh, our own commercial parking requirements?
Some cities have dropped commercial parking requirements. Um, I'm not, I'm not going to, to that extent. I think what's in the code is, is sufficient. What, but what I found in economic development is every single person that comes in the city says, how, how many parking stalls am, am I going to have for my use? And that's, that's pretty important. Um, so you, you may have like a mom and pop shop that, that doesn't care as much. I mean, they still run along their parking, but anything that's on a larger scale, typically they have a, you know, they have a, their own market analysis and they, they know exactly how many spaces they need to serve their employees and customers.
Yeah, I ask because I don't, I want to make sure we're not deterring any businesses by saying, you know, the city's requiring this, your lender's requiring that. You don't need either of those. You need this. Uh, I want to make sure that we're, that we're not, um, okay, but it sounds like you're confident.
Yeah, I think, I think we're fine.
Okay. And then before I turn it over to the applicant for a presentation and we'll circle back as a commission to, you know, discuss, one of the other key things, uh, and I saw it, uh, you know, word for word reading in the proposed, it says downtown will, which is a little weaker than a shall, I guess, uh, incorporate sustainable practices from the beginning, harnessing emerging technologies alongside, alongside timeless traditions embodied in a careful, in careful placemaking. So I read that, um, you know, sustainability will be woven throughout all of this. Um, again, a little vague, but hopefully, um, you know, as you're speaking in your presentation, the applicant can, can address some of the sustainability that's in there. And if we need to, you know, tighten up the language, uh, to be specific, like we are with, you know, bike storage or barbecues with pavilions, that may be something that we can just, um, consider as well. So if it's okay with the commission, I think we'll turn it over to the applicant to go over their, their, uh, presentation here. Okay.
Pete? Are you guys, who's, who's presenting for your side?
He's muted.
Muted. There we go.
There we go. I, I kept saying, I kept saying the host has muted me, but, it's, I'm, I'm back on. So, um, just real quick, I think what would probably make the most sense is to have, if you can unmute Jeff Speck, he can address the, um, the retail component so that we can talk briefly about that. And then Ryan Hales and, uh, Dr. Ewing can address the parking and, and then, um, we can, if you can pull up, uh, this, the slides that Ryan sent over on the parking. And the, the reason why I think the parking is, um, well, yeah, let's stay on the, sorry, let's stay on the map with the ground floor retail just for a second. Um, and then Jeff, if you can address the, the retail ground floor areas, um, and then we can move to the parking analysis.
Great. I appear to be unmuted. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank, thank you for giving me the chance to speak. One of the first concerns I had about the plan that we inherited when we began this process was that the, the street that's called Main Street was designated as the principal, um, street for, oh, so, some, uh, someone is unmuted and I'm getting an echo, so maybe if others mute, that would help. That the, the Main Street was, um, which was called Main Street because I think it was the principal vehicular thoroughfare through the community, was designated or anticipated as the main axis for actually having stores on it. And it was imagined as a four to six lane road. And the idea I think was to put the stores where the cars were and where the traffic is. And you can imagine the sort of stores that, uh, that come to main streets that are six lanes wide. And you see it all around, around the region. It was a very automotive oriented approach to locating the retail. It seemed clear to me that the greatest opportunity for successful retail, um, wasn't there, but it was on the street that we're calling Market Street that begins at the train station and then orients down towards the, uh, promenade and towards the water. That's where most, most of, you know, that's the heart of the community. That's where most of the action is going to be. That's where the, um, interface with the train is going to be. So, um, with the idea of having pedestrian oriented as well as, you know, vehicles served, but pedestrian oriented, uh, retail, that made much more sense. Uh, you know, if you look at traditional communities, you tend to find main streets, reaching from the train station to the highway and not, not along the highway. Secondarily, you'll see pink areas, um, along the water because that's the, um, you know, the, the lakefront oriented retail area that we've talked a lot about. And then also that, that one other, um, uh, purple area is, is where the, the, you know, the principal street, Main Street hits the North Promenade. That's necessary because, um, you know, we want to have at least convenience retail within a five minute walk of all of the houses or all the apartments as well. And having that, um, little retail hub on the North Promenade means that every home and business within the development will be in a five, within a five minute walk of retail.
Yeah, thanks for that. There was another, uh, slide that someone else was pulling up before we started chatting about the ground floor designation. Are we ready to move on to that one?
Can you guys see that?
I'm still seeing the non-residential ground floor. How about now? Yes.
Perfect. Uh, probably what I'll do is I'll let Reed Ewing jump in and just kind of give a little bit of background on the parking and the analysis that he's done. He studied, uh, mixed-use projects all across, what, 431 different mixed-use projects, maybe even more than that at this point. But Reed can kind of talk to that. And then once he's done, I'll kind of talk about some of the parking that we've looked at in this downtown core area in the MXD and the TOD. Reed?
Am I muted still?
I can hear you, Reed. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Yeah, um, there's so much to say. I'll, I'll try and keep it brief, but, um, by the way, it's about 640 mixed-use developments around the country. We, we, um, the, the, what, where I'd start is with this idea that, uh, parking isn't free. There's a, a book written by Don Shoup called The High Cost of Free Parking. And, uh, it may look free to the consumer, uh, or the resident as if it's part of the rent, but it's adding to the, uh, cost of everything. Uh, that's free parking is incorporated and incorporated into, into the cost of goods and services and, and, you know, apartments and so on. Uh, and a second point I would make is that virtually everywhere that I'm familiar with, not everywhere, there are exceptions, but parking in the United States tends to be oversupplied. In other words, you've got peak demand, uh, which is, uh, you know, early evening for commercial uses, midnight or to two o'clock for residential. And, uh, and the supply of parking, uh, typically is much greater than the demand. And I, I think it, it happens that way because of the kinds of concerns I've heard you voice. We, we don't want to undersupply parking because that creates problems, but we don't necessarily want to oversupply parking because that creates, you know, streetscapes and, uh, lot, lots, lots that are, are not nearly as efficiently used as they might be. So what, the, the things that we've done that are particularly relevant to this discussion are we, we've looked at transit oriented developments like no one else has. The reason, uh, no one else has is it's so expensive. We've, uh, looked at, uh, seven transit oriented developments that are literally right next to transit stations. So Rhode Island Row, Fruitvale Village, Redmond TOD, Orenco Station. And, uh, generalizing across them, the, um, the amount of parking supplied is a little over one space per unit. And the amount demanded is typically under one space per unit. For these TODs that are right next to, uh, train stations. So they, they're, they're dense, they're mixed use, uh, they, they have public space. They, uh, have onsite parking. Very often, very often the parking, uh, is unbundled. So that means that the renter doesn't get a parking space or two parking spaces as part of the rent. Has to pay extra for that, then the rent is just for the, for the unit itself. So, so if you're, if you're thinking and we, we wrote the Point of the Mountain Parking Guidelines, if, if you're thinking, uh, that you, one, one space per unit or two spaces per unit, trying to choose between those two, you're better off closer to one space per unit for the area that is right next to the train station. Now, moving out from the train station, you have mixed-use development. And, uh, we've looked at, as Ryan said, over 600 mixed-use developments around the country. And there, um, people tend to compare of the amount of parking and the demand for parking to standards in what's called the trip, uh, the Parking Generation Manual of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And we've done that. And, uh, if you follow ITE guidelines as most suburban communities do, you end up with about a third more parking than you actually need. So, um, right next to the station, we're talking about if, 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 if you want supply and demand to be in good relation to one another, we're talking about a lot less parking. And then mixed-use areas, less parking. And then when you go out to the far end of the development, then maybe at that point you want to use not the ITE supply numbers, but the demand numbers. And this is, ITE is, is sometimes referred to as one of the bibles of tra- traffic engineering, uh, because it is so widely used. But there, there are two numbers for, for both residential and commercial. And one, one is the supply, the amount that's supplied and the other is the amount that's demanded. And the supply is always with ITE much greater than the demand. So, so what we recommended in the Point of the Mountain Report was, uh, that, that, in the more, most suburban areas of the Point of the Mountain area, we, we use ITE demand numbers. And in the more transit oriented, walkable areas, we use much less. Now, the final thing I, I have to say, excuse my voice, relates to, um, the Orem Parking Study. We, we did that the way we always do it. The way we do these studies is we hire students. And, um, students need the money and they're delighted to get $20 an hour, uh, which is what we pay them and we pay them a little extra if they're willing to stay on longer. And we did that with, at Orem. In Orem, we did it for 10 properties. Three student housing complexes, three multifamily housing complexes, a couple of shopping centers, the office park. And we found that parking was oversupplied. was oversupplied. And we, we took our findings to the city council and they, as I understand it, I, I kind of lost track of it, but they did buy the idea that right next to the BRT line, UVX, that if a development went in and it was, it was very transit-oriented, they would not need nearly as much parking as the typical suburb does. And something more akin to what we, we recommended. And again, what we recommended based on TODs is not two spaces per unit, but more like one unit, a space per unit. For the
Reed, maybe I-
I'm just about done with this. So for the, for the others, we found that, that while parking was oversupplied, the city was concerned about reducing its parking standards for multifamily. And so my understanding is they went along with the more suburban norm, which is in this, in this area, two spaces per unit or more if you have student housing because the students tend to each own a car and that requires more parking. But I hope that the, the basic message is, is clear that you can easily end up overparked and that will increase the cost of everything.
Reed, thank you. That's a great introduction to a lot of the work that you've done. If we could go back a couple of slides, I want to start off on the town center area. Right there, let's stop on that slide. In the zoning districts, we looked at the, basically the downtown station area. That is the area that's kind of in the, I guess it's kind of a lighter brown. Over towards the station, we've identified that as being the TOD site. The rest of the site, we primarily treated as mixed use. And then as we get it, get out into the fringes, up into the upper areas, we've taken a kind of a third look at that area and kind of dropped those, those parking codes down a little bit. Anyway, if we could switch to the next slide, I just wanted to identify how we've gone through and looked at the parking on this. In block number one, I don't know if whoever's driving this, if you can circle block number one. And the example of, of the parking is that we looked at the four buildings that are in that, that block number one and looked at how we would park that entire area, trying to keep everything within the road system, just as close and compact as possible so that we have a short walk between any parking areas. And then we applied the rates. I apologize. I know the next slide is small, but if we could look at the next slide, just want to give you an idea of how we looked at each row, each individual row going across. I don't expect you to read that, but wanted to show you all that goes into this. We're looking at, you know, how many bedrooms, the mix of commercial, residential, office space. And so that's all accounted for within this table. The next thing we did is we looked at the time of day for the land uses so that we could look at the mix. And this is what Reed has done so effectively in the 640 mixed-use projects he's worked on, the seven TOD sites that he mentioned that were next to Rel, is he's really honed in on what those rates would be. They did a study in Orem. They looked at the rates in Orem. We compared the Orem rates versus the Point of the Mountain rate. In the Point of the Mountain study, that was utilizing a broad cross-section of all of these mixed-use developments, the 640. And we were able to obtain an even lower parking rate than what we're suggesting. We're suggesting the Orem City rates, which are, are higher again. And then if we could switch to the next slide, I won't spend much time on the next slide, but just wanted to show you kind of where those parking rates begin. So within those parking rates, we go in and we look at how many parking spaces per multifamily bedroom, per single-family residential per unit, and then multifamily occupant, for occupant. Let's go and switch into the next slide. When it comes down to looking at those rates, here's the comparison of the Orem City rates. We looked at the morning, the midday, and the evening peaks. And just as Reed had indicated, we want to look at the supply and demand. We want to make sure that our demand is always below that supply line. The supply line is about 11,800 in the downtown parking using these Orem City rates. And yet, we're only supplying, or only having a demand, a projected demand of about 10,100. So we're basically about 1,000 spaces over the top of where we probably need to be. Now, that line is a little bit inflated, the 11,100. We've inflated it two times. Number one, we've added 5% to make sure that vehicles, when they pull into, look for a parking space, they don't circulate the lot. They're not just cruising the lot, looking for a space, but yet they can find one fairly quickly. The other 5% that we've added is just as a little bit of a, a peaking factor to add that in to make sure that we don't miss the target. Now, certainly, we want to go back and reevaluate this. As, as this project builds out, it'll build out through time. I think this shows on the, well, let's look at the next slide very quickly and then I'll brief through the conclusions. This is the Point of the Mountain rates, and we actually dropped it down to about 7,600. So as successful as this TOD can be and the mixed use can be, we think the rates will be a lot lower. And so we, we're looking forward to the ability to go out and count post facto. So once a couple of buildings are in, go out and count and just see where those parking rates are. Again, it's in the developer's best interest to have the correct amount of parking and not to have the supply too far ahead of the demand. Likewise, it's in the, in the city's best interest as we look at these parking structures and the cost of those structures in trying to bring those lines closer together. And I think Jeff and Reed and everybody on the line on the development side, we've looked at these rates so many times. We're trying to find a great equilibrium, but we think we, we've shot a little bit higher so that we can come back and evaluate these rates. Let's move on to the closing slide. We'll talk about our conclusions and recommendations. Our, our recommendation is that we go with the Orem City rates, which is at 11,100. That includes that additional 10% that we spoke about, and that we continue to monitor the project. As the project is constructed in phases, we'll go out, we'll look at the parking. And if we've actually overparked it, we want to bring those parking rates back into alignment. So again, squishing the demand and the supply curves closer together to make sure that we're not overparking the world, so to speak. I hope that helps. I think Reed did a great job of explaining the ITE codes and how they're, they're very high and large. But this is giving us the best and most efficient use of the parking within the, the town center in each one of these villages.
Ryan, could, could I make one quick point?
Yes.
Yeah. So the ITE Parking Generation Manual, which is essentially the, the basis for most suburban communities setting their parking standards, says, says explicitly that the sites it studied are suburban auto-oriented sites. So the, the book itself, the bible, Parking Generation, has this qualification that, that the sites that are the basis for their standards are low-density suburban auto-oriented. And that's not what you're trying to create. So, so if, that may be what, what Harriman wants, or, you know, West Jordan or whatever, but you, you want this town center to be a walkable place that uses space efficiently. And you do not want to use ITE for, at least for the mixed-use area and the TOD area.
Well said.
You know, the, the, there are three things that cause the, these TODs to have such low parking demand. One obvious thing is people are using transit. So they're not driving. They still have a car, it turns out often, but they don't have two cars. They have one car, they'll use it mostly on a weekend, that sort of thing. So you, you have that. You've got the fact that a lot of the parking is shared. So during, during the day, for example, at the station park, you've got, you've got a University of Utah health facility station park, and that, those parking spaces are used for patients. In the evening, you've got a Cineplex and some restaurants, and those parking spaces are used primarily for those commercial uses. So shared parking is, is part of the equation, that, that the same space can be used by different uses during the day. I, I mentioned the unbundling of parking, and this would be a, a step that would be, you know, probably a little controversial. I have no idea how the developer would feel about this. But Fruitvale Village, for example, gives every apartment renter one space, but if they want a second space, they're, they pay $95 per month. And that depresses demand. And the third thing is that commercial parking is often not free, that there is a $3 per hour or whatever charge for commercial parking. Now, that may not work in your town center, but the, these TODs with the very, very low parking demand do charge for commercial users. So those three things, shared parking, unbundled parking, and paid parking are, are critical to create the kind of demand I was talking about before.
Thank you. I know Morgan has, had something that he wanted to, to say here. So Morgan, go ahead and chime in.
Yeah, I think this is a, just a good time to maybe, Jake, if you could pull up the parking table and the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. I'd like to have Reed maybe just, just kind of look at this because the, the DTS zone, that's the most intense near the station, is what's most likely going to build out first. And my concern would be overparking that, that area, which could be the area that, that should have, maybe need less parking. So how it's written right now is, under residential, is that basically each unit would be required to have one per bedroom, not to exceed two, with 0.25 spaces of visitor parking. So potentially, if you had a two-bedroom, you, units, you would have 2.25 spaces per unit in that downtown. I'm wondering if that's the district, maybe now to begin with, that, that gets lowered a little bit so we don't overbuild the, we don't overpark the core to, to begin with. I just maybe wondering if, if Reed or Ryan could, could kind of address that. Maybe that's something that we drop now. It's a point of consideration.
Well, so the, that, that is high. You know, it gets complicated because the, the TODs we've studied intensively are, are not commuter rail stations. They are light rail stations and they're heavy rail stations. Heavy rail is like a subway, light rail is like tracks. And so frontrunner probably isn't going to have the same impact as a light rail line station would have on demand. So I think I, I wouldn't advocate, you know, one, one space per unit because you're going to need more than that, but 2.25 is very high. And particularly with that, the visitor parking, the, the way that is handled in these developments is as shared parking. So, so the, I, I think that this is extremely important and no one is, we, we haven't brought up the idea of shared parking yet, but, but if you have public parking, the visitors can park in the public parking, or the shoppers can park in the public parking. And so there's the ability to share those, those parking spaces. Very often, the residents have their own parking, like, for example, at City Creek Center, you may have noticed when you go there to shop at Christmas time, how they've got the public parking area, and then they've got the resident parking area is separate. So the resident parking may be, may be separate, but the, there's no reason in the world why you can't share the, the public parking between the visitors and the, and the shoppers and restaurant goers and so on. And 2.25, to go back to your question, is very high. And, you know, it's, it's sort of, kind of almost defeats the purpose. The purpose is to create an area that is very pedestrian-friendly and not dominated by parking and very transit-oriented, not dominated by parking. And 2.25 is dominated by parking. That, that is the suburban standard for the communities around you for, for apartments. Is, is two, two spaces per apartment is kind of standard suburban.
So Morgan, this is Pete. Maybe I can just chime in real briefly, even though I'm no, I'm not a parking expert. And, you know, this is a discussion that we've been having internally and I, and I, of course, with staff for a long time, to a certain extent with Planning Commission and City Council, but there's been a lot of iterations going on behind the scenes as well as we've kind of circled in on these numbers. I think from our side, based on Dr. Ewing's research, based on the numbers that Ryan has run, based on the other examples that we've used as data points, we, we really feel pretty confident that the, that this, these standards will be overparked in the downtown center area. And that, that was why I think the, the compromise that we came up with, which is a good compromise, it gives us the opportunity to reevaluate the parking once we have enough in here to have a good sample size and a good data set, so that we can go back and look at this and say, is, is this really behaving the way that the data predicted that it would behave? Are people really behaving the way that, that we assumed that they would? And therefore, do we have more parking than we necessarily needed? And, and our plan is to do that before we're so far down the road that we say, oh, you know, we've overparked the core. And so I, you know, I, I really appreciate Morgan's comment that, that this probably is overparked. And I think that's what we're hearing from, from Dr. Ewing as well, is that given the TOD development that we're trying to create and the walkability that, that we're hoping to foster in this environment, we all hope that this will be more parking than what we need. And when we put these standards together, when we put, when we put this table in here, we did that knowing, at least on our part, that we were assuming this was overparked. We took the number that we thought it should be, we grossed it up to, for certain assumptions, then we grossed it up again, you know, to accommodate for a bunch of public parking, because that was another comment that we had. And so I think, I think what we've proposed is a good compromise between making sure, absolutely sure that we have enough parking that this is a successful community, while putting in here a mechanism that we can reevaluate this with staff as soon as we have enough information to look at and bring that number down, if that's appropriate, so that we don't end up overparked in this area.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks everyone for the, the good discussion on the parking. I, I want to continue to move us forward. I know there's a presentation that was prepared. I don't, did we get all the way through that one, or is there additional information in there, Pete?
Yeah, we did. We, we can go back through and, and look at any specific points that you want. The, the main presentation really was on the parking, outstanding issue from last time. And we had a little bit on the, you know, the, the ground floor commercial that we talked about, a little bit on the amenities, but really the, the biggest outstanding item that we just didn't have the information for up until recently was the parking. So that, that really was the main focus of the discussion.
Okay. Morgan, I see your hand raised. Do you have something else to add here?
Yeah, with the, I wanted just to have a conversation quickly about the, the park strip. It's, and I know we haven't, we've talked about those, but not necessarily. I, I don't think from a, from, from our end, we are, what we were kind of anticipating was eight-foot park strips, and maybe we didn't quite catch that. We saw there were some six-foot park strips. What are, you know, your concerns, if any, with having anything less than eight feet? Are you okay if we, if we bump them up to, to eight feet? That, that, that's one of the proposed conditions that would change if-
Yeah. So if you don't mind, can you unmute Matt so that he can answer that one?
Great. For the most part, we, we have no problem with eight feet. It's only when we get into the primarily- It's only when we get into the primarily commercial corridors. And this really has to do with the fact that the the largest tree grates that you find on the market are typically six by six. So we were planning for a six by six tree grate, which is where we sort of delineated that area. And we've we've discussed all sorts of issues of soil volume and how we can stabilize space in between tree grades, provide for permeable pavers and so forth, to provide more root zone to to enable the the trees to grow. But the only place that 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 actually becomes an issue is on those commercial corridors because there simply isn't typically a grate that's made to go at that size. On on most other streets, eight feet is 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 just fine.
Right. I don't know, Don or Chris or Sullivan, if one of you guys are on, I don't know if you want to maybe just kind of describe what what your concerns are, if you're if you're fine keeping it, because it looks like there's a few areas where there it'd be six feet. We kind of understand the 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 tree grate. You don't want to go have a park strip that's larger than that. It seems that might become an awkward configuration. I don't know, Don or Chris, Sullivan, when you guys want to speak to that.
I'll speak to it, I guess, unless, Don, you want to comment there? You know, we we just want to make sure that we've got adequate room for the trees and and protect the trees from damage, from mowing and stuff, and understand about the tree grates. So, you know, I think that we probably can work through these issues.
So I was the one that brought up the eight foot park strips. And over the years that I've helped developers, what one of the things we found out is if your sprinkling system, standard sprinkling system will normally waste water if it's the if the park strip is over is under eight feet. And so that was one of the things we adopted. When I came down to Vineyard is the eight foot park strip, just because of conservation of water. Residents hate seeing that water run down the street when you're paying the premium price that we're paying for water here. And so that that's one of my biggest concerns is how we take care of that.
Don, is it possible in the park strip to, I mean, we're we're talking specifically about grass. It's an issue of, you know, drip systems with other other viable options in the in the park strip?
Well, clearly, we haven't designated what's going to be in those park strips. If we're putting a tree in a tree grate and you've got, if it's it's parked next to that, you're going to have to have some pedestrian walkways between those trees. So I mean, if we're talking about that, then then, yeah, we could probably deal with a drip system.
Matt, yeah, I see. You've got something to add?
Yeah.
That is, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, I I wanted to mention that as as we worked through the the code modifications, that there's three types of park strips that are that are distinct. One is a type that is is entirely planted, right? And that's what you already have in in a lot of the city to date, where it's a grass strip that, you know, may have have trees in it. That type is is where we're absolutely in agreement. Eight feet's fine. That makes sense. You're using the type of irrigation system that might spill over. But there's there's two other types of of plant strips. One is what we call the 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 urban park strip, which isn't a tree grate, but it's it's usually about seven or so feet deep by fourteen to sixteen feet feet long. And so you find these in places of higher residential and say, say, office intensity, not not so much commercial main streets. And these these types of tree areas give a lot of space for for the root growth and permeability. But they also provide pedestrian space to access cars because you have a lot of back and forth between the sidewalk and and the street. And then the third type is 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 on that commercial main street where you have you have tree grates and and pits and and those would typically have drip system. And that's where you get the sort of six by six of tree rate. So what we're aiming at is is to have eight feet where we have the continuous green strip and the sort of conventional type of of watering, which which Don has has recognized. If it's less than eight feet, doesn't doesn't work particularly well. But it's really where we get to the the commercial condition that it would be an issue to be too wide because it doesn't fit that configuration. But in that case, we would be dripping.
Yes. And in addition to what Don said, you know, based on, you know, obviously, the tree size, too, is that is a concern on the width of our our park strips.
So I guess one of the questions I'm having, if we're going to stay with a six, seven and eight foot, should we specifically call out what type of planting or what can be in inside one of those six foot by fourteen foot? You know, I don't want to call a planter bed because it really isn't going to be a planter bed, the way you're discussing it there. So that we or or do we try to adopt something in our landscape manual that that defines this so that when a contractor bids a project, we aren't having to fight him on what what goes in there and how it goes in?
Well, I think previously you had some standards which identified where the sort of groups of large, medium and small trees were applicable to be planted based on based on that width. And, you know, that that makes a good deal of sense, right? On on the commercial, really, the the commercial corridors, the the market street, for example, is 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 our area of greatest concern. And and those would have, you know, a medium tree and not a not a large tree. And and we certainly are are interested in providing the planter space necessary for large trees elsewhere.
So, Don, would it make sense then if we just worked to supplement the landscape manual for the city? If we just work together to figure out in those areas where you have that smaller park strip, what plants would be appropriate in there?
To me, that would make a lot of sense. I mean, Sullivan and Preston would have a lot to say about that. But I think adopting a landscape plan, you know, of standards that meet the requirements, so we're not having to fight continually with contractors and with designers on what's going in and how it's going to go in and and have a clear picture of what how it looks would would really help an awful lot. Right now, it's just very vague.
Yeah, I think that'd be easier for us, too, in the long run.
I agree that, you know, the landscape ordinance or something like that, we can really clearly define and and even give us some examples of the types of plantings and whatnot in in that and and cover us.
So we just just leave the the six, seven and eight in there for now with a rec some some sort of a condition that we work with staff to propose amendments to the landscape manual?
Yes. And then and also clearly define the tree because if you have an eight foot sidewalk, you don't want a tree that it's going to have a canopy that's, you know, fifteen feet wide. Or you're going to have that right into a building or pretty close to a building. So.
Right. I think that's I think that's exactly what Matt was saying, too, right? Is you want to still do planting and the size of the tree based on what's eventually going to be around it. So I I think that's a great idea, Don. We can, we can come up with with planting guidelines and kind of like you have the overall tree manual, you can have little subsets of that and that just say, in these areas with smaller park strips, you have a narrower set of approved trees that would go in there.
Yeah. And what we're planning on having, hopefully, before one of these buildings are built, is a a complete landscape manual that would talk about what type of drip systems, what type of spray systems, what trees, what plantings would be going in the beds, all that type of thing, so that we're we're we feel very comfortable knowing where we're moving forward.
Right.
Can we just, is is Tice unmuted to give his feedback? He's worked a lot with our tree manual and landscape designs and stuff. Tice, do you feel good about this?
Yeah, I've been following very closely and I'll work with Sullivan and Don and Pete. And we can get this straightened out fairly easily.
All right. Well, that's good feedback on the the park strips. Thanks for touching on that. I know, Pete, it doesn't need to be real in depth necessarily, but can you just speak to some of the sustainability efforts that are that are woven into all of this?
Yeah. So, you know, we we've been working with the engineering department, Don and Sullivan and everybody from for years on a lot of this, a lot of the sustainability from a development standpoint, a land development standpoint, from a building standpoint, you know, the 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 sustainability in the building standpoint is really pretty market driven. In other words, the most of the commercial buildings now, and even a lot of the residential buildings now, the the tenants kind of put that in as part of the demand. So, for example, we're building an apartment, multi-family development right now in Lehigh, and we're we're putting in a bunch of smart home things like energy efficient smart thermostats and, you know, water monitors and that kind of thing, just because that's what what residents are are demanding. So, you know, I I think what's in the code is appropriate. And I think what we can do is, as we identify those things on a on a per development basis, we can highlight those to the approving body and kind of walk through those with you. The hard thing right now, I think, is is kind of making more really, really specific things when you've got such a long project and you don't know what's coming in the future. I think the idea is just to make sure that we're doing things that make sense, both from a development and from a sustainability standpoint. So, for example, with the with the six acre park and working with the city and building the pond so that we could use tailwater irrigation water to irrigate those, the the big open space areas, instead of using culinary water there, using, you know, the detention basins as as water purification and and water settling ponds and using linear detention basins versus just a storm drain system that you clean at the end. So I think there's there's a wide variety of solutions and things that we can that we have been implementing and that we'll continue to implement. And then in addition to that, on the actual construction side, I think those are are really market driven and they're kind of, you know, they don't even have to be mandated because tenants are just requiring it.
Thanks, Pete. I think that's important because, you know, it is a it is all throughout pretty much every section of our general plan. And we definitely want to be a leader in this area where we we get to start with a clean slate in the in the downtown area. So we want to make sure that we build for the future and that we're have sustainability on the mind as we're going through all this. So thanks for that. All right. Pete, did your did your team have anything else that they wanted to cover as far as slides go? Or are you done with that?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. All right. Planning Commission, please, you know, if you've got any additional questions, please ask those now. And then I'd like to get into some some commentary and see if there's any any changes that we'd like to propose before making a motion on this.
I've got some things.
Okay, yeah, Bryce.
First of all, I was wondering, it it says dedicated visitor parking, visitor parking shall be clearly marked and shown on site plans. But then it says on-street parking may count towards visitor parking. How are you going to mark on-street parking as visitor parking? Because aren't we allowing the on-street parking to also be the parking for the residents there?
Yeah, we we are. So the on-street parking won't be marked as visitor parking. But to the extent that there's visitor parking that's not on-street, it'll be clearly marked as visitor parking.
And then the second thing was, as far as Geneva Park goes, how much of the acreage there is usable? Because I know that there's going to be some waste from the downtown area for the cleanup, and that's going to be capped off. And I know that we can't put irrigation on there and we can't put any kind of foundation for anything on there. How much of that actual park space can we use as normal park space?
Yeah. So I I don't know that the Geneva Park is something that you would you would really want to categorize as normal park space just because, you know, e- even in the original code, it was really kind of the repository for the impacted material that was coming off the town center area. But that being said, I mean, it it's one of our main goals to maximize the usability of Geneva Park. So from day one, we've been working with the civil engineer to try to figure out how can we, how can we make this park the most usable that we can? I think we're probably several months away from knowing what the what the usability of that park is as far as the percentage of the ground is from a typical park open space area. What we've really been trying to do with the civil engineer is to figure out what kind of terrain are we left with when when we have the impacted material piled up? How can we minimize the amount of surface area, like the overall, you know, just acreage that the impacted material is actually resting on? And then what kind of creative uses can we do with the impacted material areas? Because that topography will be different than a than a typical flat baseball field style park. So, you know, I I don't want to, I don't I don't want to make any promises of what we can do right now because I just think it's it's too early. But I am excited to be able to come back to Planning Commission with with some brainstorming ideas and some working sessions on some ideas that we're working on parks that we think will be able to creatively use that park to its its best extent.
Cool. Because, yeah, I'm, I just want to make sure that it gets used, especially if it's being counted towards the twenty percent of open space that's needed. I just want to make sure that a big chunk of the open space isn't towards just cleanup area for the area. I want to make sure that there is actual usable space.
Don said there was no no money in his budget for snowmaking equipment, so we crossed the ski hill off, but we're still working.
And then, yeah, I think that's pretty much it for me.
Thanks, Bryce. What other questions does the Planning Commission have or discussion points?
Are you talking about just general questions?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is a, this is the time to kind of fine tune this if we're if we're approaching making a motion. Any any questions that you still have? Go for it.
Okay, we've talked a little bit tonight about student housing and it would be designated as such. And is that part of the five to six thousand residents total that we're talking about in the community? Would some of that be designated as student housing?
Yes, that's right. So so what we don't want to have happen is is, for example, some other areas in Orem and even in Vineyard where you have, you know, a housing designation that's being used as student housing as a practical matter, but it wasn't planned as student housing. And so it's causing some unintended consequences that, you know, that we've all been talking about for a couple of months now. So that that's why, that's really why you heard Morgan say at the beginning, the the proposal to add a student housing designation that would treat the parking for student housing differently, just recognizing that the recognizing the fact that if you have four students in a home and and they're going to create a different traffic and parking pattern than a family of four in the same unit.
And and understood. Thank you, Pete. I just, I just was trying to understand and make sure we weren't talking additional housing for students that would be beyond the five to six thousand units that we talked about before.
No, it would be a part of that number.
Okay. And you know, just just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So just to be clear, I mean, we don't have, I mean, we don't have a student housing development planned right now. You know, we just wanted to make sure that we were planning for that in the future because with the UVU campus expanding to the east, you know, we we wanted to be realistic that this may be a really good student housing area. And we think that the student housing element could be a very good component for this downtown energy and the downtown element that we're trying to create. But we wanted to make sure that we were planning it right from the start instead of, you know, trying to. instead of, you know, trying to, trying to jam it into something that it didn't really fit in.
No, I, I, I'm totally in agreement with it because I think the reality is, as was mentioned in previous meetings, we are, will be a bigger, uh, university community with the expansion of UVU and I think we need to recognize that, just bite the bullet and say, "We will have some housing reserved for students." I, I think it's very wise to do that and I compliment you for it, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks Tim. What other questions, uh, do we have here, planning commission?
So I, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Shannon. No, you please.
I just have a short question. So, um, we talked a minute ago about, um, about how we were gonna try to enforce in the code by being specific. Do we need to have, um, this is more of a question for, for Morgan. Do we need to have any specific language about, about, um, enforcement and vision? And just to make sure that we don't run into anything that we don't want to have to deal with in the future, I guess, is kind of what I'm trying to get to. I just wondered if we needed anything specific in the code addressing that besides the specifics up front?
Um, yeah, I mean, it, it kind of depends. So if, if the, the worry is, for instance, it seemed, well, it seems like the residential amenities under the half-mile radius were the ones that, um, that were kind of honed in on and the others seemed a little better. And so if you're, if you're like worried that bicycle storage, secure bicycle storage could, could be taken, not that the developer would do this, but could, that it basically means like it's secured to the ground. That's essentially a bike rack that's secured to the ground. I, I could see that being, um, you know, there, there's recent issues. I, I hurried, I kind of hurried and put together a few edits to that section that I can drop in the, the, uh, the chat and, uh, the chat section and then Pete and those guys can, can comment on it to see if, if, you know, they'd wanna add a little bit more definition.
Yeah, that, that'd be helpful Morgan. I know earlier you mentioned secured and covered bicycle storage, barbecues with pavilion. I, I had those down in my notes. So yeah, if you've, if you've got some notes, yeah, thank you.
Well, what it says, and I, I just kind of threw these together so we can change them however we want. But it says secure, covered bicycle storage, uh, community gathering area or meeting room. I, I, to me, that, that one seemed pretty good, um, but if you wanna have a square footage, you, you could put that in there. The other is playground with park quality features. That's still kind of general, but it adds a little bit more that it's the type of playground that you would see in a public park. And then it provides the planning commission some guidance when you review this, the, uh, the site plan that if they come in with, with, you know, sometimes you see those really dinky playgrounds that are behind like an apartment building. If that's not what you're wanting, then this would kind of say, no, it's the, it needs to be something that you can see within, within a city park. So provide you a little bit of guy, guys. I wasn't sure what to do on water feature. Uh, I know that's, it's kind of Christie's, cause it doesn't wanna found this.
Water, water features must have, must be hooked up.
I'm not too concerned about, about that. I, I think we'll, uh, you know, that, to me, that would be like a splash pad or, or something else, um, an interactive water feature. But I, I'm not really sure how to add more definition to that.
Honestly, I would, I mean, even putting water features such as splash pad or interactive water feature, like I think that gives like the intent a little, little clearer.
Yeah.
Not from Costco, Christie says, so.
Barbecues with pavilion, maybe that's, that's too specific, but that, that would be kind of a, a higher level of the barbecue area, cause you would.
Yeah, not just a, not just a pit in the middle of, you know, a grass area or something.
A place where you could actually gather with your family. And the pocket park is already defined, so I wasn't, I wasn't too worried about that. I'd like to kind of hear from, from Pete and those guys, um, their thoughts on it and, and, you know, but those are some suggestions.
Yeah, I think the only one that I would look at would be, um, the pavilion. I, I think there's gonna be quite a, quite a few of these little pocket parks that probably don't rise to the level of having some big pavilion, but maybe, maybe we say a barbecue, a park quality barbecue with picnic benches or something like that. At least one picnic bench, so you have, you have a place to eat with the barbecue. It's not just a standing barbecue in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, yeah, an eating, eating place, trash can, something like that.
Yeah, but.
Drinking fountain, I don't know, you know, some complimentary features that all work together.
Right.
Barbecues with seating areas.
Yeah.
Related seating areas. And then they can be creative and do benches or like a pavilion if they wanted to.
Right.
Move them open.
Yeah, I think we'd be okay with that.
That's the only question that I had, thank you, this is awesome. I appreciate everyone's hard work.
And then Morgan, I also saw you dropped in the, the language about working with staff on the trees and plants. Yeah, so that's helpful. What other questions does the planning commission have?
I, I have another observation to make and it's, it's more of an observation than, than a question and I, I've raised this before, and that's about high-density housing. And I just wanted to comment to make sure that the planning commission, maybe the city council was aware that currently, based on the current number of residences we have in, in Vineyard, we are at about 70% of our residential units are multifamily. 70% of our residential units are multifamily or high-density. Now that, that compares with surrounding municipalities such as American Fork and Orem and Pleasant Grove and others that are somewhere between 30 and 45%. Now adding an additional five to 6,000 units, we've taken away our single-family houses out of that. We're making them all multifamily, as I understand it largely. I think within a few years, we're going to be up well over 90% of our residences in Vineyard being multifamily. I just wanted to make that a matter of record based on current numbers and projected numbers.
Yeah, George, I don't know if you're unmuted, like, um, uh, if you can speak to the ratios that we're at right now that Tim brought up, uh, of multifamily to single-family, but you are correct, uh, Tim, that, uh, you know, it's essentially all multifamily, uh, in the, in the town center.
Yeah, the, the 70% numbers I got from the city itself, just a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, yes, well, I don't know on the current percentages that we have, um, in the city right now, but, uh, in the town center, yeah, it would be mostly multifamily.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's helpful Tim, especially to, you know, make sure that's in the minutes and, and on the record, um, you know, for, for awareness and, um, that, thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I just think it's important for us as residents of Vineyard to understand what it is we have moved to and, um, not to try to hide anything and make it very publicly aware to people that this is the kind of community we're in.
Yep, and particularly that, that portion of the city as well, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the planning commission?
Well, I had one, this is Tim and it was more for Morgan and maybe Liz, but in, in reviewing the general plan analysis that came out with all of the documentation under the stated goals, uh, one of them was to activate Vineyard's natural resources. And, um, there were things like passive recreation, cultural and eco-tourism mentioned. And I didn't see anything in there about historic preservation or historic education or heritage recognition, which is part of our general plan. And I, I guess I would just like to see that added in so that it's recognized that that's part of our goals.
Yeah, so, um, can, uh, maybe Morgan, you can speak to any sections of the code that would, um, be appropriate for us to maybe be a little more specific, um, like, like Tim was saying and what we've done and revisiting a few of the other areas to ensure that, uh, some of the, the heritage, those types of things are preserved?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I, so and then I'll have just a couple of things to add, but, um, what I'd recommend is with the heritage, um, language, I think the, uh, like the vision statement is a good spot for that because the vision statement is supposed to give you the overall like feeling and, and, and idea of what the code is supposed to be and, um, kind of sets the, the, the mood for the rest of the code. I think that would be a good spot. We had economic development language and sustainability language added there and I think that might be a good spot to put something in regards to, to heritage as well.
And Morgan, I'm, Morgan, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I just think that since we have a spot already in what you, you and your staff have written up that talks about passive recreation, cultural and eco-tourism, that, that that could also be a place that mention could be made about the need to preserve our history and educate people about the history and heritage recognition as well.
And then it, Liz, if you're on, uh, if you could, if you could chime in, Liz did the general plan analysis. So I think that may be language that was pulled from the, the general plan when she was kind of analyzing the code within the context of the general plan. I don't know if she's on or not.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to note that, that maybe we could work it in somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, we would kind of need to know, so if you guys made a decision tonight, then you would, you'd need to actually find a spot for it. That's why I was thinking, um, you know, in the, uh, in the vision part, cause that is all encompassing for the entire code. There's probably a place in the, um, in like the open space section or in, along the promenade. You know, we could, we could put a statement in the, uh, in the promenade section as well. And I'd have to ask Pam, um, if, if she's on, if we would need to have the specific language tonight or because it's not a, a binding regulatory language, um, you know. But, but the other thing Tim is too, is, um, we're, we're planning to amend the general plan and to do our annual update and, um, that actually might be a better spot for it because it's not a binding, you know, it's, it's not like a regulation that we're talking about, but we could have a town center open space section that lists out that, that we're gonna strive to incorporate heritage themes throughout our open spaces. That might be the more appropriate place for it than in the code.
Well, and, and I maybe misunderstood what I was reading, but I, I didn't think this was binding either. What I read where it says the general plan analysis where stated goals are made, and I just felt that we had overlooked a very important part of our stated goals. When it talks about activating Vineyard's natural resources, not binding, but it was the kinds of ideas that we had. So I, I don't wanna belabor the issue, but I just think that we need to incorporate it where it's very obvious and part of the downtown Vineyard, uh, development and not limited to just the promenade, but spread throughout the community.
I think then you need to have where you're gonna put it. It sounds like it just needs to be in the vision statement.
Yeah, I think, I think it would fit in really well in the, the vision statement, uh, cause that, that talks about the entire town center. And then when we do our general plan amendment, we can have a town center section that talks about incorporating heritage. That's what I'm saying, that, that might be the better spot because when, when we design our, our open spaces, one thing that we need to look at is the general plan. And if the language is in the general plan, staff will ensure that those, those types of elements are incorporated into the, into the open space and the planning commission, cause it would go through a site plan review.
Yeah, so, yeah, cultural and heritage, um, opportunities. I think weaving those into the vision statement in appropriate areas, referencing the general plan, uh, and keeping that up to date. Tim, I always appreciate you making sure that we're advocating for heritage. Honestly, I think that's a, that's a big part of it and we don't wanna lose that. Even, even though this area is, you know, different from what, you know, Vineyard has been that you've called about with the, you know, housing mix, I, I think these are, there are opportunities to still highlight the heritage. So thanks for speaking up.
Oh, no, you're welcome. It's, it's because I'm old.
No, that, that's something that we all need to, to hang on to, so I'm glad you, you continue to bring it up.
Pam, if we were to incorporate heritage language into the vision statement, my question is, do we, do we have to have that specific language tonight? Or because it's not a regulatory, uh, statement, having it just as a condition and then we add something in the vision statement, would, would that work or do we need to have a specific text?
Well, I want it to be, I want it to be where it will be most meaningful and will be taken seriously and will be considered in decisions that are made. So however that needs to be made, I, I sometimes feel we, we push the history and heritage back and say, "Well, let's put it out here and let's put it out there with the hopes that somebody will see it." And the point of it is, is that nobody really sees it and takes it seriously.
And that's, that, that's fine, but my question is more process-driven, uh, for, for Pam.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Is it, what, what you're asking is, is a good thing. Well, that's what I was thinking, that, that's more of a general plan thing. We could put that in the town center portion of the general plan. And, and, and that's, cause the, the planning commission does the site plans and you, Howard setting it up is that you would look back to the general plan for your site plans. So I don't think it necessarily needs to be in the code. But if you want it in the code, then I think we need to have the language and the section where you want it.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not prepared tonight to put it into the code, I don't think. Just making a couple of statements, so I'm fine.
I think it just needs to be in the vision statement and then added to the general plan. So the motion would be like you said, to add heritage to the vision state, statement and reference the general plan.
Okay.
Am I fine with that?
Thanks Tim. Um, I got a message from Jeff, no, no questions there. All right, so we, we've had a lot of lengthy discussion. We're, uh, working into our, our four of the meeting here, but this is good, important stuff that we're working on. Morgan has sent, um, in the chat window, a few of the, the conditions that we've discussed. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to incorporate those. And then staff does, in the staff report, um, is recommending, uh, approval of, of this ordinance. So based on the discussions that we've had, is anyone, uh, on the planning commission, uh, ready or prepared to make a motion?
Anthony, I have all the, I have all the conditions typed in. Record if you would like, the added conditions. When, when you're ready, I'm just wanting to, I have it all typed out.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind putting it in the chat window, just, you know, if, um, if anyone is prepared to make a motion, that they can just review that briefly.
I think Shannon needs unmuted.
I got unmuted. Yeah, thanks.
There's, there's five conditions, so I'll, I'm just gonna dump them in and someone can, can read them out. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, and actually, um, before anyone makes a motion or anything, yeah, put those in, uh, and I'll just read them out and then if there's any additional discussion, um, just because we're, this is a long meeting doesn't mean that we need to rush an important thing like this. So let's, let's take the time to, to read over this.
I'm gonna share my screen, I think that would just be a cleaner way.
All right, I think, Morgan, I think I've allowed your video now, so you can go ahead and share your screen.
All right, you, you see that?
There we go. All right, so I know some people aren't, uh, joined with the screen, so just bear with me, I'm gonna read over this. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, approve, approving the town center zoning text and zoning map amendments with the following additions. TIS shall be updated and submitted to the city engineer prior to construction of roadways based on approved road configurations. That one was in, uh, the original presentation, we did not, um, add that new, it's just discussion. The developer shall work with city staff to define allowable tree types and plantings permitted in each park strip type. That was one that arose tonight and has been added. Amend ordinance to add parking category for student housing in all districts requiring a minimum of point eight parking spaces per unit occupant. Staff had prepared that for their original, um, with no maximum, let's add that. I think you're in the wrong, uh, next bullet point down, Morgan. I think you're in the wrong. Next bullet point down, Morgan. Yeah, so for the student housing, point eight per occupant occupant with no unit cap. Next one, add a heritage statement within the vision statement and update the town center language to the general plan. And then amend ordinance to further clarify residential amenities. And we talked about secured cover bicycle storage and playground with park quality features and park quality barbecues. We also had in there as well. And then the rest were our park quality water feature and then the rest, I think, were unchanged. So that's a summary of some of the proposals that we've discussed tonight. If you're making a motion, you can take any or all of them or none of them as as you put forward a motion and then we can, we can take it from there. So read over that. And if anyone's comfortable making a motion, please feel free to do so. If not, let's continue our discussion.
So do we need to change the wording? I know we've been using the wording interchangeably about town center and downtown vineyard. Is one official? Should we be changing if so it's consistent or what?
Yeah, so my understanding is currently as zoned, it's the town center zone. Part of the proposal is to change it to Vineyard Downtown. And that would be if adopted, that that would be the new official term. Is that correct, Morgan?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. So, Tim, you're you're fine using either tonight, but you know, if we if we make a decision, then then I'll expect the downtown from you from now on.
They come up with another name.
Just to add more clarity. Let's see.
The conditions stated in the record by the chair.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Can we make a motion that we that we approve the as stated? Is that what we?
And keep in mind, we're simply recommending approval. The the city council is the final decision making body on on any zoning zoning changes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that to recommend the approval of the ordinance with the conditions as stated by the chair.
I second.
All right, and we'll do a roll call vote. So Anthony, aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
And Shan?
Aye.
All right. So the planning commission has formally recommended approval of the town center code or Vineyard Downtown code based on these written proposals that Morgan has up on his screen. So with that, we'll turn it over to the mayor and city council. And based on our recommendation, they can choose to take action tonight or or continue based on how they feel. So mayor, go go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all of your hard work on this and the great questions that you presented tonight. Jake, I know you're probably working on unmuting all of the council right now, so that's excellent. In the meantime, I wanted to do a few things. The presentation was posted after the public comment ended for the parking and I wanted to give the public an opportunity to raise their hand and continue comments on that portion. If there are any comments, we're, from what I understand, we don't need to open another public hearing. We do that for additional transparency. But since we're sharing a meeting, I'm just going to allow for the open comment right now. So if you have comments, please raise your hand and I'll take those. Okay, Zach, I saw you were on here and you had a question about how the town center is different. I hope that you had your question answered. If you didn't, please post or write about it. One of the things I did want to just talk about really briefly was that this area is a one of the most extensive crossroads for state transit and transportation. So sometimes when we're looking at this area, we think, how can we make this area kind of big, vast, open fields? And the state came up with the 2050 Transit Transportation Plan that has the multimodal hub, the second multimodal hub for Utah County directly in our city and then has a the Vineyard Connector, which is actually another like highway corridor. It's a state road that connects the west side of the lake to the east side of the lake and connects into one of the main east to west crossings for the region. And so as we plan this, we need to remember kind of where we've been placed in this area as a transit oriented development and as a crossroads for these systems as as we're looking at building this out. Council, personally, after hearing all of the comments and discussion, I would like to continue the meeting and discussion to our next, our next meeting. However, if you feel differently, please let me know. This doesn't mean you can't make commentary tonight or weed out some things and say what is good or what you would want changed tonight to finish the discussion, but please take that into consideration as I would, I would hope that we could continue it. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah. Just comments again, and I don't know if we could go up on this on the presentation, I don't know if Morgan or Jake's operating it, but on the PowerPoint, just kind of go up to the amenities again. I think maybe slide 14 or 15 or 13. Yeah, kind of in that area. I I like the additional information we've put in there. I still, I still wonder, and this is still going off the last time we met. Obviously, some of these items, you know, we were requiring open space or public, you know, or places for these people to be able to congregate and have some amenities. I just, I mean, it seems like there's different tiers to me. I still have concerns over, you know, what will be where. And so I I would like additional information. I would like an idea of of how many of each. I just think it's too wide open for me to be able to get comfortable with it just because I I see different tiers of types of amenities. And so I'd be more comfortable looking at something where it's like, hey, we have to have one of tier A, one of tier B, and one of tier C. I think that gives a greater width and availability to to people living in this downtown area. And so I would say that with an eighth of a mile and with a quarter of a mile. That's something that I would like to see personally. The parking, can you go down to the parking requirements tab slide? I I still have, I I love the information that was provided. I think it's it's great to have all of that. Obviously, this is a new type of development. I I think last time I asked to be able to get specific examples of other developments throughout the the nation that would be coincide with what Vineyard, what we expect Vineyard to look like. I didn't, I didn't necessarily see that given back as feedback yet as it pertains to parking. So I would appreciate to get some feedback and specific information of other areas throughout the country where you could say, even if it was 20 years ago, this is what it was 20 years ago, and this is what it's come into now. I would like to see that, especially with the expertise we have with Jeff Speck and with these other great individuals. I think that's something that I would like to see specifically. I struggle with a little bit with the on-street parking and how we'll be able to coincide that, but that's just because my brain's not functioning really well right now. I think it's so late. So I think a little more detail there and 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 I think staff's done a great job of of going over it. One other question I have is on the, I know we have the ability to go back. It sounds like after we've built out different phases to go back and see and assess with a with a parking study, it sounds like. Does that leave it open then? That if we assess that the parking's too low, that you're required to add additional parking as well? I mean, if we're if we're looking at that, I I would love for it to be lower, the need for parking. So do we look at it on a yearly basis? Is it is it looked at on a two-year basis? That way, there's something more structured in there that we we know that you're assessing it and we're being provided that information, not not just when you want to do it, but so we can see this built out truly on the way it should be. So I think that should be something we should look at and it should be able to be adjusted up or down considering what the market's doing at that point in time. Just because we've seen over the past eight years, this has changed so dramatically. I appreciate the feedback that Tim gave with the percentages and things like that. And it's interesting enough to to say that this was originally zoned by a lot of the historical people in the city. Back way back when and to see what was done back then compared to now, I think it's been a a vast improvement. I think we're getting additional amenities that were not going to, we were, we wouldn't have got received them back then. And so I do see as a positive movement, even though we would still have the density Tim is talking about, we wouldn't have had a lot of the open space. And so I I see this collaboration that the developer has done with those who have worked on it and staff and the city as a positive direction. So that that's my feedback, Mayor. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. That's excellent. John?
Yeah, I just had some quick feedback, kind of echoing some of what Chris said. You know, in reference to everything I've been hearing, I think David made a comment in the chat room of, you know, trust but verify. So let's, let's, let's do that with these amenities. Let's make sure we're, you know, we get the language right. And then and then, you know, the parking topic, which is such a big topic, I I definitely don't want to discount what what our experts that were here tonight are saying because we definitely don't want to overprice ourselves from a an opportunity or make ourselves difficult to be available by too much parking. So what I like, and I think Chris kind of alluded to it, let's make sure we have mechanisms in place that are either that are looking at, do we need more? Do we need less? So it's kind of a, you know, and I know that there's some of that already kind of in place, but let's just make sure that the parking is is something that we can kind of move and adjust with based on what we're learning as we, you know, kind of develop this, but you know, take in mind what these experts are also saying so that we're being as intelligent as we can. And I think that's my only input, but I like the idea of continuing later because I'm becoming, like Chris said, fairly useless in my brain. I've been sitting on Zoom meetings for way too long today.
Okay, thank you, John. Christie or Tyce, do you have anything to add? I didn't see your hands go up. If not, that's okay. We can just make a motion to continue.
Yeah, I don't, I think Chris hashed out a lot of the same issues. I think probably all of us are having, so no point in going through it again. I'd be in favor of continuing. I I just want to say thank you to the staff and of course Anderson Geneva for all the work they've done. I know everyone's excited about this project, passionate about it on both sides here. It just, I I feel like, you know, if we can just push this off a little bit longer and fine tune some of the ideas that have come out tonight and brought up this past week, we'll we'll all be in a place where we can be really confident moving forward.
Okay, excellent. Tyce?
I'll just add, I I'm extremely appreciative of the efforts on all parties. I thought tonight's presentation was very informative. We picked up more information than we had in the past. I don't have any major problems. They're small issues and I think that's what everybody else has said. So I'm supportive of the general consensus as it is now.
Okay, great. Can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that we continue the activity on item 5.2.2 zoning text amendment, the town center form base code until the next meeting of the city council.
Okay, second. Christie seconded and then roll call. Christie?
Aye.
Tyce?
Aye.
This is Julie. Aye. Chris? He said aye. John?
Oh, there you go.
John?
Sorry, I, yeah, I, if I if I mute myself, I realize I locked myself out. So I, sorry, guys.
That's okay. Okay, great. Just quickly before we close the meeting, because it wasn't on our agenda to remind me, we had a quick update by Chris. And then I believe that was one of our own. Oh, no, we had one more update about Penny Park. And if the other council members wanted to share a 10-second update, you may as well. Go ahead.
Me? Okay. So with the the recent events, obviously, whether it be small businesses, families, individuals, all of the above, everyone's kind of reassessing expenses, income, all of the above. So we just want to make sure it's well known to everyone as residents and those who are are businesses in the city that, you know, Vineyard as well, we're looking at all of that. We're very active at looking at our budget. We understand that budgets are in a sense, very fluid depending upon what happens. And something like this is, it's very important for us to look at the current atmosphere and and what what, you know, economic stability there is and then make adjustments from there. So the mayor, myself and Jake have had multiple discussions and I know Jake's reached out to department heads and things like that of, you know, prioritizing what's most important, making sure we can take care of, you know, all the residents here in the city and can keep and continue operating. And what that means is we're looking at different scenarios in terms of, you know, where budgets lie and and where where we can, you know, tighten that belt a little bit to make sure that we're doing the best thing for a city. But I would say this, you know, based upon how our budget runs throughout the year, you know, our our current year budget, even with some of the sales income tax that potentially would drop because our budget ends in June, right, Jake? It 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 won't change our budget dramatically this year. But as we prepare for the next fiscal 12-month schedule, it's something that we're definitely looking at. We just want to make sure that, you know, if the the council members have any other questions, comments, concerns, thoughts, to please reach out either to Jake, myself, you know, Julie, and and let's just discuss, you know, what what thoughts we have. And we'll have those future budget discussions. I think Jake's going to try to have something on our next meeting as well that we're working on to just discuss this a bit more, but I just wanted to put that out there that it's it's not a second thought. We're we're on top of it. And and the last thing I want to mention, just on the economic side, would be that obviously it it's, you know, we're still excited. There's still a lot of businesses that are very excited to come to Vineyard. The mayor can speak to that. Any council member, Jake, you know, Morgan, we've had a lot of interest over the past six months. And so, you know, it feels like we're right there on the cups of of what can happen in the city. And we're hopeful for what we see in the downtown area, that it will grow along Geneva Road. So there's, there's a lot of good possibilities coming down the pipeline.
Thank you, Chris. Was there anyone else on the council? Oh, Jake, did you want to do a quick update on Penny Park, please?
I asked Sullivan to do that, so I'm going to unmute Sullivan real quick and he can, he can talk to that.
Okay.
Just to echo while I'm, oh, Sullivan's unmuted. We're good. But just to echo what Chris said, yeah, the the biggest impact that we're anticipating to the city revenue over the next 12 months is definitely on the sales tax side. But like he said, we're almost at the end of the fiscal year and because we budget pretty conservatively, we have most of the revenue that we need to fund our current year budget. So this budget should not see much of an impact. But go ahead, Sullivan.
Okay, Bronson is on here also, and he can add to this, but we've been working with Bronson and Flagship to complete some of the projects. We're actively working on the punch list that we've given Flagship for Penny Springs Park. So it's it's still a process. They've got some things to finish. Bronson, do you want to add to that?
Hold on, let me unmute Bronson. He's not.
Or may, or maybe if Pete has some updates.
Waffle Love was parked outside of Bronson's house for an hour.
Waffle Love was parked outside of Bronson's house for an hour, so he might be not here anymore.
And he didn't get you anything?
No, I'm up in my room.
I found Bron.
Oh, you got me unmuted.
I got you.
Yeah, no, that's right, Sullivan, I, we've got the punch list, we're working through those and hope to be able to get it open soon. I I know it's a difficult time this time, people like to get out in the parks as much as they can, and officially Penny Springs Park is not open. They would prefer to keep that closed until they complete all of their punch list items. The more people that get in there, the potential for damage to the existing equipment and stuff, you know, is a possibility. So, you know, if you can reach out to neighbors and whatnot, and just let them know that it's not officially open, might help us out a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, John, did you have something?
Yeah, just the last thing from me. I've been kind of acting, I've kind of emergency management, emergency manager role, so to speak, for Vineyard a little bit. If anyone wants the Utah County Emergency Manager updates that I get fairly regularly, I've been forwarding them to Julie, to our mayor, and just started adding Jake. If anyone else wants those updates, shoot me an email, and I will include you guys, so you can get those reports that I'm getting that are the most accurate information that we can have about what's going on in the state and in our county.
Thank you so much, John. Tyce, did you have anything?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, great. Um, okay, well, this is wonderful. Just so everybody knows, we're staying on top of it. We're in constant communication with the task force, with the White House, with the other municipalities as far as the COVID-19 pandemic is going. We've been working with all of our businesses and transitioning the, transitioning them over, so they're all under an operation where they can deal with the stay home, stay safe, and we hope that everybody is participating in this. The the last update that we received was if we can continue to do this for the next little while, we can maintain our our systems and make sure that our healthcare is able to take care of this problem that we're facing right now. But like all of the people just spoke, we are constantly working on it. We're constantly meeting, and we are making sure that our city is prepared so that if any kind of situation comes into the city itself, we will be on top of it and ready to act. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, we'll take John for first, Tyce for second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
All right, you too, thank you.